We have on the city council right now.
This meeting is being recorded.
Yeah, live.
We're missing Tony.
Tony's gonna be about five or six minutes late.
And Jeffrey and.
I don't see Sean.
John. We have a corner.
Okay. Okay, so let's see, we should begin. Um, counselors, I'd like to welcome you to our February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to us to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I'd like to make the non-discrimination statement for city council meetings. It's the finding of the city Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as city counselors do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive, and we will not accept it at city council meetings. I'd like to begin by mentioning the city counselors that are on this call. First of all, my name is Val Gilman. I'm the council president and the ward for city counselor. Um, we have Jason Grow at large city counselor. We've got Scott Memard, Ward one city counselor. We've got Frank Majota, who is Ward three city counselor. We've got Tracy O'Neal, who is in Ward two city counselor. We've got Council Jamie O'Hara, who is at large. We've got Council Jeff Worthley, who is at large. We've got Counselor Sean Nolan, who is Ward five and vice president of the council. And I think that is all. Um, Tony Gross will be about five minutes late for the call. And I'd also like to um, to introduce members of city staff here. Um, we've got Adam Kukru, who is um, in charge of Cape and Veteran Services. We have got uh, Mayor Greg Verger. Um, we've got Joanne Sinos, who's our city clerk. Mike Hale, who is a director of public works, Jill Cahill, Cahill, who is our C A O, Suzanne Egan, who is our general counsel. Holly Dogg Willow, who is our H R director, Ryan Knowles, who is our director of I T, Tim Good, who is our assessor. And I think that is it. And I'm sure there'll be more shortly. Anyone else? Did I miss anybody? Um, but we'll get into the applicants later. So um, I asked that if you're waiting to be brought in later on, if you could just keep yourself um, blacked out, um, that would be great. So we can focus on the city council matters that are in front of us. So I'd like to begin um, on a rather somber note, and um, I'd like to um, to have a moment of silence for Bob Why Not. Um, Bob Why Not passed away on February third, two thousand and twenty-three at the age of seventy-seven. He was a city counselor for five terms, two terms in eighties and three in two thousand and nine. And after that, uh, he is a city clerk, began that role in nineteen ninety-two, adjusted the piece. He graduated from Gloucester High, class of nineteen sixty-three. He attended Bryant and Stratton College in Boston, began a computer programming job at Honeywell, went on to work at Raytheon, George Marsh, and Sweetheart Plastics, where he met the love of his life, his wife Pat, and they've been married for fifty years. Member of the Gloucester Lodge of Elks and D E S Club, he loved his coffee times with friends and local establishments. My favorite memory with with him was our last memory, which was in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, and we sat at the Willow Rest in the in the beautiful picnic benches outside and um, really enjoyed our time together. He touched the lives of many, um, whether it be playing golf, loving his fifties music, organizing caroling events each Christmas, giving back to the community. Again, he leaves his beloved wife Pat, his daughter Sheri Spencer, his son Robert V. Why Not, and three grandchildren's great grandchildren, and also he's survived by his older sister Gail, who's a resident of Gloucester. Um, I think Council Worthley and um, our state clerk, Joanne Sinos, would also like to say a few words. Um, Joanne, would you um, continue with the moment of silence? Go ahead.
Sure. Um, we all have different memories of Bob. He was my supervisor, my friend, who would always took the time to provide guidance, advice, feedback, and support, which I will miss. That is all.
Thank you, Council Worthley.
Yes, um, this one hits me hard. I've known Bob Why Not, I knew Bob Why Not for probably thirty years. Um, he lived in the same neighborhood I grew up in. His daughter is a year behind me in school, his son a couple years ahead of me in school, and we shared a love for local politics and music, and had played in lots of musical arrangements with with Bob and bands. We've played at senior homes and nursing homes. And he ought to know Bob Why Not is to love him. He he always cared. He always put, he he put his wife and his kids first, but the city of Gloucester was a was a very close second in terms of his commitment and his love for the community. So he'll be sorely missed, and I appreciate that we're doing this moment of silence for him. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And I'd also like to just thank the mayor for flying the flag at half-mast. And um, his services um, will be at a later date. There'll be a celebration of his life. So at this point, let's take a moment and remember.
Wait a minute, Val. Bob asked me to ask for a motion for reconsideration at this point.
Um, Council Memard acknowledges Bob's wit, and that was something, no matter what, he would always do a motion to reconsider, and he taught us that well. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Um, so let's um, please join me and our city council with a moment of silence in memory of our friend, our colleague, and constituent and community member, Bob Why Not. Thank you, counselors. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is oral communications?
Um, and thank you. And I just do want to just mention briefly, um, before we begin that, that the public hearing two thousand and twenty-two oh three four loan order two thousand and twenty-two oh oh nine, in the amount of nineteen million dollars for the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse Facility renovation will be withdrawn. So if you were thinking that that was going to be a pub public hearing matter, um, it is no longer. And I'd like to welcome Tony Gross, um, who is an at-large city counselor. Welcome, counselor.
Sorry, Emily.
Not a problem. Um, at this point, we have oral communications, and the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and a matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Um, we will ask the person, Tracy O'Neal, you're you're on the roll call tonight, number one. So if you would do the um, timing, and um, if you would would time on your phone and at two minutes and fifty seconds, if you could um, have your bell ring and raise the hand to let people know that at two minutes and fifty seconds, it's time to wind down with ten seconds to go. Um, if you're ready to do that, we are ready. And we wanted to remind people that um, the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the council for matters not on the agenda?
I just brought in Mary Ann Boucher.
Okay, great. Um, Mary Ann, welcome. And you have three minutes to talk to us if you'd introduce yourself and your address. And um, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, ninety-three Mount Pleasant Avenue. Last week, the children celebrated their one-hundredth day of school, less than eighty days to go before the summer break. E G S continues to be a great friend to thousands and a great neighbor as well. The city of Gloucester committed, and funds were appropriated twice, providing the open space written into law in which E G S School sits upon and earmarked for the Article ninety-seven replacement land once the school closes its doors this coming June. It's up to all of us to make sure that this newly protected open space park doesn't come undone like the protected Article ninety-seven dedicated open space playground that may that was Meadows Field. Rumors abound with internet other than open space plans are spreading like the Wild West. Are we a community that says we protect open space, or aren't we? The signed bill reads as follows, to the Department of Public Works of the city to be used for municipal park and open space purposes with a grant of a deed restriction placing the land under protection of Article ninety-seven of the amendments of the Constitution of the Commonwealth in perpetuity. Stop undoing what has already been voted on and funds allocated for multiple times with new isolated schemes. I wish I could personally thank Lieutenant Arthur Maxwell Parsons' family for so graciously donating the playground that sits adjacent to the E G S site. It's a treasure to the children and families of our community. In four short months, the East Gloucester Elementary School will shut its doors after seventy-five amazing years serving the children of Gloucester. The building will eventually be demolished, and the site will be graded and ceded for open space. When the building committee voted to use the veterans' school, Meadows Playground and Field as a site for the new consolidated school, Article ninety-seven came into play. Article ninety-seven states that if you take a piece of property, you must give land of the same size or value. The site of East Gloucester School was chosen as the replacement land, even though it was a bit shy of the size. I don't believe in a praise that was done.
Yes, I hate to interrupt you. You got ten seconds left.
Okay, but that was the chosen spot. Unfortunately, part of the swap land was overlapped onto Lieutenant Martha Arthur Maxwell Parsons' playground, taking with it paved area and even parts of the parking spaces that were installed several years ago. It's just another sentence. To help with the additional staff parking issues, those spaces sit on the Maxwell Parsons' playground, and I've never been able to get a clear answer from the city as to whether they were legal to put there in the first place. In short, the new open space is all that was taken from Meadows plus the E G S site plus the Maxwell Parsons Playground. We paid for it. It needs all three of those parcels to approximate the loss.
Mary Ann.
Anything else? I'm done. Anything else isn't compliant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, next is um, C K. I think that's Lisa Riggsby, if I'm not mistaken. If you could introduce yourself and your dress, that would be great. You have three minutes to speak to us.
Hi, this is Catherine Ryan.
Sorry.
My address is seventeen High Rock. Um, thank you for the tribute. Um, that was beautiful at the beginning.
Thank you.
The Rose Baker Senior Center entrance door from the parking lot needs an automatic door with a push-button door opener, a protective door overhang. I've observed that it's as much of a main entrance as the main entrance. People park out back and enter through the back. Others are dropped off by car or use public transportation and enter through the back. They go inside and exit carrying bags, supplies, yoga mats, you name it. Some require the assistance of a cane, walker, chair, or a friendly arm. Others have had recent surgery and are going to exercise. The exterior door that is there now is heavy and difficult to open. When it's windy out, it's very windy there, which makes the door more difficult to manage. Any inclement weather is unpleasant. Rockport's Community Center has a built-up portico feature, if that's helpful to compare. There are two bus stops for Rose Baker. One is on Rogers and one is perpendicular on Manuel Lewis. I've observed people disembarking on Rogers use both entrances to access the senior center. That's a long way to walk with a cane. When patrons are dropped off or attempt to be dropped off alongside or near the bus stops, despite clear notice that there are bus stops and there's no parking there, navigating and accessibility issues is not safe. People with canes double back to avoid cars, buses, people walking to get to the ramps to the better cutout. I think the bus stops render the front door less accessible than out back. So in addition to making the door, the back door automatic and protected, which will increase the center's safety and accessibility, I suggest consideration of longer accessibility ramps for the sidewalks alongside the bus stops. You know, for instance, where the bus doors open so that they don't have to go back to get to the ramp. Um, can we have an update on the contact of work for Rose Baker Senior Center? Can this be added to the scope of work or its own request as soon as possible? The consolidated school is somewhere seventy-two to ninety million. I think the community can swing the cost of retrofitting the door on the senior center. I'll include pictures with this request, and thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Appreciate it. Um, I see no other hands. Um, Counsel O'Neal?
Yes, so I'm sorry, I I owe Mary Ann Boucher an apology. I was thinking two minutes and not three minutes. So she got her three minutes, but it was kind of chopped up. So I I do apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing your job, though. We appreciate that. Um, so I just wanted to um, to just say. Go ahead.
I would like to read the last paragraph again because I felt like it was rushed and I was cut off.
And. Oh, okay.
Well, I think.
I thought I thought we gave you extra, but that's okay. So you may have another minute. Um, Tracy, if you could time that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Mary Ann, I do apologize.
No problem. Thank you very much. I said, unfortunately, part of the swap land was overlapped onto the Lieutenant Arthur Maxwell Parsons Playground, taking with it the paved area and even parts of the parking spaces that were installed several years ago. Um, to help with the additional staff parking issues, those spaces sit on Parsons Playground, and I've never been able to get a clear answer from the city as to whether they were legal to put there in the first place. In short, the new open space is all that was taken from Meadows plus the E G S site plus the Maxwell Parsons Playground. We paid for it. It needs all three of those parcels to approximate the loss. Anything else isn't compliant. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So without objection, counselors, um, in honor of Valentine's Day, I'd like to take the um, presentation of Mayor Verga after the um, approval of the consent agenda, where we have six staff members who are being reappointed, as well as nine board members um, being reappointed. So we'd like to allow them to get back to their Valentine as quickly as possible. So um, having said that, um, Madam Clerk, if you would announce the next order of business.
Is confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you. And I'll turn the meeting over to our O N A Chair, Sean Nolan.
Thank you, Counselor President. So on the new appointments, we can start with the historical, sorry, uh, the E D I C. Uh, Rob Gordon, Rob can't be with us tonight. Um, we did vet him fully at the O N A meeting, and he was not able to be here tonight. I feel fairly confident with his uh, presentation to put him forward. Um.
Counselor, hold on a sec. Joanne has her hand raised. Um, Madam Clerk.
Rob Gordon is on the call. Um, he is in attendance, even though he did say that he wasn't going to be here. So we can bring him in.
Excellent. If you could, that'd be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue, Counselor.
Rob, how you doing tonight?
Good, Counsel Nolan. Sorry, yeah, originally, it is my wife's birthday as well, so I didn't think I was gonna make it, but uh, this was more appealing, so.
Oh, wow. I don't know if that's gonna give you a forgiveness later. Uh, but if you just wanna tell the council a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the E D I C, that'd be great.
Sure, yes. Same message for the from the O N O N A meeting. Uh, you know, my belief that Gloucesters uh, history and hopefully its future are largely defined by uh, by a pretty unique set of industries. Uh, you know, resources are are limited, the ability to invest in infrastructures limited. You know, I think we've seen that with some of the, you know, the the summer crises around the around drought and and water and and more recently sewer. Um, and you know, we'd like to be able to do everything, but there, you know, I my concern is there's an awful lot of focus being placed on on residential development, which is, you know, understandable, given that it, you know, attracts a lot of things and um, and and is more sort of a a shorter-term game. Industry has a much longer runway, and my can, you know, my concern is that it'll be neglected to the extent of residential. Um, so it's an area that uh, um, you know, that that I want to put some emphasis on. And I think I have, as I mentioned at the O N A meeting, I think I have a background in that I can, I can contribute to the uh, you know, the continued future of Gloucester as a uh, as in the importance of industry to the city.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert. Is there any questions or comments from the council? All right, hear and none. I'd like to read the motion. On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by myself, the ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, um, to recommend the city council appoint Rob Gordon to the E D I C, term to end seven one twenty-six, and I saw move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard? Counsel Memard, you are muted.
Yes, thank you, Robert.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you so much, Robert. Have a nice, nice day and a nice birthday with your wife.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
We have the Historic District Commission with Barbara Lambert. Barbara, how you doing tonight?
I didn't see Barbara on the call, but if she can raise her hand, because we have forty-nine attendees, I did a sweep and I didn't see her. And I did still don't see her on the call.
No, I'm looking myself. Barbara was was very well represented at the O N A community meeting. Um, the objection from the council, I don't have a problem reading this and promoting her. All right, so without objection.
Hold on a second. Um, Mayor Verga has his hand raised. Mayor.
It should be, to make it easier. So Barbara is currently an alternate member, moving up to a full member. So technically, this is kind of a reappointment, if just, if that helps make it easier for her not being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So on a motion by Council Majota, seconded by myself, the ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Barbara Lambert, fill on the unexpired term to the Historic Commission, uh, District Commission, term to expire two fourteen twenty-four, and I can move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion? Counsel Worthley?
Yes, even though she's not here, I'd be happy to put my name next to Barbara Lambert's because I I've known her for about twenty-five years. She's a steward herself of historic property, and I think she's got the right license for service on Historic District Commission. So I'd be happy to endorse her, support her candidacy.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else like to discuss this? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes, and my dog said yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. And uh, final order of business for O N A. Counsel Nolan.
We have the Historic District Commission, Rosemary Lundberg. Rosemary, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
How you doing tonight, Rosemary? I know most of us know you and all your extraordinary work and your beautiful home, but if you just give us a little brief discussion on the abilities that you like to serve as a historic description, that'd be excellent.
Certainly. Um, so I've been in Gloucester resident for ten years, visiting here for over four years with my husband's family. Um, I'm currently on the board of Generous Gardeners, Chair of the Associated Charities of Gloucester, and I'm a driver for Meals on Wheels. Um, through Meals on Wheels, I I met Prue Fish, and um, I delivered meals to Prudence and became a close friend, especially when she learned I lived in the brick house next to the Legion. Um, I've always had an interest in Gloucester history, but it was impossible not to be drawn in by Prue's passion um, for the historic houses here. Um, I'm looking forward to joining the Historic District Commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Rosemary. Is there any questions or comments from any of the counselors? All right, hear and none. I'll read the motion. On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Counsel O'Hara, the ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Rosemary Lundberg as an alternate member to the Historic District Commission, term to expire two fourteen twenty-five, and I saw move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion? Uh, Counsel O'Neal?
I have a question. Sean, uh, Counselor Nolan, term to expire two fourteen twenty-five or twenty-six?
It says twenty-five. I believe it's because she's an alternate member.
Okay. Um, my paperwork.
Okay, Bob, it does say twenty-six. You may be right, Joanne.
Yes, the template says twenty-six.
Okay, her term.
Yeah.
The template on the. So her term to expire or to end is on the twenty, is is the two thousand twenty-six or twenty-five?
Okay, so I took it off the O N A, so it'd be twenty-six. Let me just check. I'm sorry.
Counsel O'Neal, appreciate you um, you taking note of that because we want to be consistent with this based on what the vote was. So thank you.
Welcome.
Um, Mayor Verga has his hand raised while we're while Joanne is looking at the O N A minutes. Go ahead.
This should be a full three-year term, even though Barbara's uh, I I I fulfilled um, alternate term is still out there hanging. We put um, Rosemary in as a, sorry, Rosemary in as a full term. So we still do have one opening, which I'll get to when I talk, do my presentation, but this is a full term.
Twenty-six.
Okay. So um, so counselors, we don't have to amend that, do we? Um, why don't we just say that we all agree that it it's term to be expired on February fourteen two thousand and twenty-six? Okay, everyone's clear on what the motion is. Counsel Worthley, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I just wanted to be clear. The minutes say um, alternate. I just heard the mayor say a full member. I'm not sure what which it is.
There are two alternate seats. One was not filled at all, and Barbara, the alternate, moved up to full. So Rosemary's going into that unfilled, full alternate.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, okay. So I believe the um, Madam Clerk, you have your hand raised.
Okay, so at the O N A, what happened is there was a note that um, Sheri put in that Ms. Lundberg's appointment was incorrect on the mayor's report and her term two fourteen twenty-five is as reflected in the motion. So it's two fourteen twenty-five and not twenty-six because it was incorrect carried over from the mayor's report.
I'll take your word for it, but it's a full.
I'll take your word for it, but it's a full, full term.
Okay, so it is a full term, but we're back to, so that, so the motion, let's redo the motion. Councilor Nolan, why don't you do it with the notice that is in the minutes? So two fourteen twenty-five, so I'll let you take the lead and redo the motion. Thank you.
All righty, I'll read it again. On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council O'Hara, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council appoint Rosemary Lundberg, alternate member to the Historic District Commission, term to expire two fourteen twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, Council Nolan made a motion, and then Council Worthley seconded it. Council Grow has his hand raised.
I moved that we amend the term to expire to two fourteen twenty-six to bring it back into alignment with the actual appointment.
Second.
Okay, Council, on the amendment, Council Grow, seconded by Council Gross. Discussion on the amendment to the main motion. Council Memard?
Makes sense to me. Thank you, Jason, for making that amendment.
Okay, seeing no further objections, let's, let's rule on the amendment. Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley? Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
The amendment to the main motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now we're back to the main motion. Everyone knows what that is, correct? Okay, let's vote on the main motion. Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Welcome, Rosemary. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
That concludes that, so, so next order of business, Madam Clark.
The consent agenda.
Okay, councillors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Council Worthley?
Yes, I'd like to take the appointment of Michael Hale off the consent agenda, just so we can discuss that for a bit.
Okay, anyone else like anything taken off the consent agenda? Council O'Hara, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to take City Solicitor Suzanne Egan.
Okay. Anyone else like anything off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to, if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda without the reappointments of General Counsel or Counsel Suzanne Egan and DPW Director Michael Hale is a motion to approve. So moved by Council Grow, is there a second?
Second.
Council Worthley, second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Sorry, yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
The amended consent agenda is approved, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now, we will go back to DPW Director Michael Hale. Is there a motion to, to approve the DPW Director term to be expired to fourteen two thousand and twenty-five, so we can discuss?
So move.
So it moved by Council Memard, I believe, and seconded by Council, was it Grow?
Sure.
Okay, so Council Worthley, that was yours, so why don't you take the lead in the discussion? That we have a motion.
Thank you. So, Michael Hale, Mike Hale came to the city, I think, as an inspector in the Health Department in, in two thousand August of two thousand, actually two thousand, I'm sorry, and, you know, he worked his way through the Engineering Department, and then Assistant, I'm sorry, interim director for DPW, and then DPW Director. And there's a period of time where there was a director named Bob Gravino, he was John Bell's DPW Director, and he was doing, he gathered the whole staff together and said he wanted to do some five-year planning. And retired DPW employees, Peter Dennen and Steve Elwell, kind of chuckled. And they chuckled because they said, every time there's a new mayor, there's a new DPW Director, there's no way you should be looking at five years in terms of planning. Michael Hale has been the DPW Director for Carolyn Kirk, for Safathie Romeo, and for Greg, Mayor Greg Verga. And I think that what that says to me and to all of us is that he's the right person to do this job. It's the hardest job in the city. I don't think any of us would want it or could do it, and I just think he deserves a special commendment, commendation for how hard he's worked and his whole team. So I just want to make sure that's made known before we vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. So we have a motion, we have a second, and any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
We like Mike, yes.
Council Majota?
Yes, absolutely.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely the best.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Congratulations on your reappointment, Mike Hale.
You very much. End words.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
And then the, the final matter is the General Counsel Suzanne Egan, term to be expired to fourteen two thousand and twenty-five. So is there a motion to reappoint General? Okay.
Again.
Motion made by Grow, seconded by Gross, based on what I heard, and term to be expired to fourteen two thousand and twenty-five. Before turning the floor over to Council O'Hara to speak first on this motion, without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules and allow Mayor Verga to speak. Is that something that he gets to do at O N A and, and where he's doing this in front of the full council? I thought that that would be fair. Without objection, councillors? Okay, thank you. So, Council Verga, you have the floor.
Councillor, going back in time there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, jeez. My mistake.
No, I am super pleased to put Attorney Egan forward for a full term. There was some turmoil in the Legal Department before I got here. We had turmoil after I got here, you know, two attorneys have gone. Suzanne's come in and really helped us as a new administration get where we need to be. You know, her job is to look out for the best interest of the city. That's the mayor, the City Council, and all of the staff. When I interviewed her, I asked her the question, who do you represent? And that's the answer she gave me. And I told her, if you had said the mayor, she wouldn't have been hired. Because I did not want someone who was going to be looking out for my best interest, because sometimes that might not be in the best interest of the city. And so I'm very pleased with what she said then, and every step of the way since then, as she's been our official legal counsel. Once again, she did a great job, her first stint with Carolyn Kirk, and we're off to a great start now. And she has the full support of my administration and the full support of the other managers that are on tonight and those who aren't on. So I am looking forward to a positive endorsement from the council, so we can get back down to business again tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to allow Council O'Hara to begin the discussion, because he's the one that asked that this be taken off the consent agenda. So Council O'Hara, you have the floor in the discussion on motion.
Certainly, thank you. I, I, I opened by asking that City Solicitor Suzanne Egan get, get sent back to O N A as I was on the meeting. Due to technical difficulties, I could not, I, I heard the, the review, but I could not ask questions. So I opened by asking that it be sent back to O N A's administration.
So I don't know if procedurally we have that in the cards, because the appointment begins now. So I don't, Council Grow, do you want to rule on that?
I think that, I think the time to delay the, the moving of her appointment to this full City Council would have been at O N A, when there was problems. At this point, the motion was made and voted on by two members of the O N A Committee and brought forward. I mean, it's unfortunate that, that Council O'Hara was unable to ask the questions, but, you know, he, he probably should have asked for, for a delay on the vote or some other procedural way to, to hold the, the vote, but the vote was held, moved to the council.
So Council O'Hara.
I'm going to say there's no compelling reason he can, he can ask questions tonight.
Right, ask your questions tonight, Council O'Hara. Because you weren't able to reconsider, because you weren't there to, to make the motion, so you weren't on the affirmative side of the vote, so there was nothing that you were able to do. So the floor is yours. Ask your questions to our city solicitor.
Terrific, I appreciate that. Thank you. City Solicitor Egan, I just have a question. The first question I have is related to, we, we had an issue regarding the dog ordinance, private road, public roads. And I, I don't think I really ever found out what transpired. It's, it's been an ongoing issue throughout the city, as majority of the roads in the city are private for public use. We had a specific issue on Rust Island, Craft's Road, and ye olde County Road, where a person, person's dog apparently bit somebody. Constituents contacted me. So again, I, I, at first, it was the dog ordinance was not applicable on private road for public use. I was shocked, as I, I know a specific constituent who lives on a private road for public use that has received more than one citation from animal control for dogs off-leash. So it, it's, you know, either it's, it's, it's in effect or it's not in effect. Obviously, if it's not in effect, I think we as a city have a very large problem. Again, back to majority of the roads are for pri- public use, but are private. Do dogs read the signs? Realizing owners read the signs?
Council O'Hara, Council Grow has a point of order. What is your point of order, Council Grow?
The motion on the table is the reappointment of the county, of the city solicitor. And we get a question that deals with her job performance and whether or not the council should be approving her rather than a specific incident of a, of a, of a decision that he may have disagreed with. I mean, we should be talking about her appointment.
I, I concur with Council Grow, Council O'Hara. So do you have another question that's based on the appointment? And if anyone wants to disagree with my ruling, you are able to challenge my ruling on the floor. Would anyone like to, okay, Council O'Neil?
I thought you told Council O'Hara that he could ask questions, because he couldn't ask questions at O N A. So therefore, the questions he had for O N A, he could ask tonight.
Good point.
That's what he was told. He was just, you just told him.
Council, let's, Council Majota has his hand raised, Council.
I, I, I'm just saying, if, if Council O'Hara does have questions, let's just go forward with the question. For example, Suzie, Suzanne Egan, why do you want this, or why did you do this? I just think that to have this additional background to prolong something is just, there's a lot on the agenda. I understand your point, but let's ask the questions. Unfortunately, you did miss O N A. You know, and I just want to continue to move forward.
Okay, I will, I will take back what I said, and I will allow Suzanne, would you respond to Council O'Hara?
Absolutely. So I believe your question is the applicability of the leash law to private or public roads. So I know that we had a discussion that there was an incident involving the animal control officers and whether or not they were enforcing those rules, and you and I had that discussion, and we looked at the Code of Ordinances, and then I met with animal control officers, and it was, we looked at the, the full, the comprehensive animal control ordinance, and there was a determination that, yes, that they would be enforcing the, the ordinance on private ways. And currently, right now, not stemming from that, but part of what we have been doing in the Legal Department is we met with the city clerk and the animal control officers, and have gone through the city's existing animal control ordinance and taken the current state law, and they're out of sync, because we have not updated our animal control ordinance in a number of years. So our new Assistant General Counsel has done an update on, of our animal control ordinance, and that is going to be presumably, I believe, coming before the council to update that, because that's an important aspect of what we should do as a city, is to make sure that we're in compliance with the state laws with regard to animal control.
Thank you, Suzanne. Council O'Hara, your second question, are you? Go ahead.
Thank you. Attorney Egan, related, related to the, it was an ongoing problem, I think it's still an ongoing problem. The Good Harbor Beach Creek, that we experience high readings, very unsafe readings, if you will. We, as a city, there were numerous times when there was virtually nothing to forewarn the users of the beach, ultimately, people who, and they did enter the creek, children, people of all ages had no knowledge of the bacterial levels that were in excess. And I, we continuously, I continuously asked the mayor, you know, are we going to do anything to keep the people out of the creek? And virtually, nothing, nothing was done from my end, from what I understand, there are residents that they're actually experiencing problems now, health issues. People who regularly use the beach and, more importantly, are, go into the water. So I, I just want to get your viewpoint on the creek issue. As we are only a couple months away, we'll be back in, quote, summer season. And I don't, based on the report, the hundred and twenty thousand dollar report that was done, we don't have, we certainly don't have a cure, so I would assume the readings are still unacceptable.
Thank you, Councillor O'Hara. So I am, I have not been involved in that process or, or had a chance to read that report, so I believe that's, that's a matter that is being handled by the Board of Health and the DPW, but I personally haven't been asked for legal advice regarding that project. But I, I'm assuming that everybody who's involved in it is complying with the law, and if there were any legal questions that they would need to ask, they would have asked me. So, I'm sorry, I can't be very helpful on that one.
Council O'Hara, are you satisfied with that from where?
Well, I, I, unfortunately, I know it's been a long time since last May, June, July, but it, it was brought up that the city solicitor was, was had reviewed the situation and that, you know, we as a city really don't need to do anything. So I know it's been a long time, and I know Attorney Egan is extremely busy, but that was. uh, Attorney Egan is extremely busy, um, but that was mentioned by the, uh, administration.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You're right. I thought you were referring to the report and what we should do like currently with regard to the report. So you're asking whether or not, um, so I do recall that back in the summer, there was an issue as to whether or not we had any obligation to this police, if you will, uh, people's use of the creek and whether that would pose any liability to the city? I think that was your quest. Is that what you're referring to? So, um, so to a certain extent, so we have, we warned, um, it's my understanding that there were signs posted and there was warnings, but we as a city don't have an obligation to police, um, to police to, uh, uh, the creek in that manner. Because we have, so there's a notion that the city is acting on behalf of all the people as a municipal corporation and is involved in the continued operations of the municipality, but that with regard to specific duties owed to specific individuals, we don't really have the ability to police all, um, to police or require or, uh, require behavior of all people in the city. So we make our best efforts, we provide warnings, you know, we're all familiar with the warnings that are um, provided in certain instances, but we can't prohibit or stop like physically stop people from doing things. So under the, um, under our obligations as a municipal corporation, I would say that a warning is sufficient as opposed to actually putting up, you know, physical barriers and having people there and, um, pulling people out of the creek if they go into it.
Um, Mayor Verga, do you have anything to add to that? Cause that's kind of something that is part of, um, this, this city?
That's it. I mean, we put the signage up, we put huge signage up with, you know, we took every step that we could as far as warning people. And to Suzanne's point, you know, we didn't have the the obligation nor the ability to have people patrolling it and hauling people out of the water. So we, we certainly want to solve the issue. But as far as the questioning, the line of questioning to Suzanne now on this particular issue, I think it's getting a little off, um, the, the topic, but she did what she needs to do. We're going to continue to do what we need to do on the city side.
Thank you. Um, Counsel O'Hara, does that conclude your questions for Suzanne?
No, I, I have additional questions.
Okay, well, let's, um, let's, let's all share the floor now because, um, we're discussing Suzanne's appointment and that's the motion on the floor right now. So, um, who would like to speak? Um, um, on behalf of the motion, Counsel Grow.
I'm, uh, gonna enthusiastically support Suzanne's reappointment to, uh, city solicitor. I find, um, her willingness and her patience to explain the law, to sift through the nuances that we have to deal with sometimes. And her patience and willingness to explain that to, to, to someone as, as thick as I am, um, very refreshing. I feel like I can always count on a robust conversation and good advice when she is done with it, um, when, when we, when we're done with the conversation. So I feel like the city's in good hands. I feel like she does a terrific job representing the interest of the community, which is, I, I had the same exact question that Mayor Verga had, which is who do you work for? The answer is she works for the City of Gloucester, uh, which is the right answer. And I feel that she does a terrific job at that and I, I look forward to seeing her in her position for the next few years.
Anyone else on the motion? And let's try to keep these to about a minute because we've got a lot to cover tonight and we need to stay on pace here. Um, Counsel Memmar, then Counsel Majota, and then Counsel Nolan. Go ahead, Counsel Memmar.
I, I, I would follow in my support for Suzanne Egan as our city, uh, general counsel, uh, with what Counsel Grow just said. I've had the opportunity to work with her in a number of situations and she's been consistently helpful and constructive and very thoughtful. Uh, particularly as we've worked with the private road task force for the mayor and also on ordinances to update, uh, betterment opportunities for people with issues relating not only to paving, but also water systems uh, that are defective and on private ways and how to uh, adopt the betterment process to address these issues for our constituents. But I think generally she's, uh, brought a lot of experience. Welcome back to Gloucester for her, but, uh, I think she's a wonderfully constructive, uh, facilitator in this role. So thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Majota, and then Counsel Nolan.
Thank you. Yes, um, just, I want to agree with Counsel Grow, Counsel Memmar, uh, Suzanne is very professional with according to law and everything. So I fully support her. Um, she's done a great job for the city. And, um, just thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Nolan.
I as well always support Suzanne tonight. I've worked with her on a few issues. Uh, mostly known, she's cleaned up a lot of issues that have been wronged in the past. As, uh, Counsel Memmar had said, um, there's a water betterment um, situation going on for private roads looking for public water. And she's been excellent to work with and very thorough. Um, and, uh, right now I, I couldn't ask for a Betty, a better city solicitor and I will be giving her my full support tonight.
Counsel Gross.
Yeah, I, um, I've actually had the privilege probably to work with Suzanne longer than anybody from when she was back, uh, as an assistant, uh, city, uh, city attorney, um, a long time ago, previous life. But anyway, uh, one of the things that's been remarkable, um, that I've been reminded this time around is that and working with Suzanne closely on some of the ordinance stuff that I've been working on, which has, um, been a fair amount. And that is that no matter what I am, the lens that I'm looking through, her lens is completely neutral. Um, it is, it's really refreshing and it keeps, um, keeps me out of trouble and I really do appreciate that because uh, it, it's important that we get an unbiased, um, view on, on our legal matters and Suzanne brings that to the table every time. I've also been really, um, amazed at the recall of something that she had worked on in her previous periods here. We'd be looking at something and, and I would mention and she'd go, oh, I remember that. And this is back in the Kirk um, administration and, and, you know, that kind of, um, of historical and institutional knowledge is just invaluable. And, uh, and so Suzanne has really been a, a really key asset to the administrative team. And, uh, and I'm very pleased to have her here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Worthley.
Yes, let me lower my hand here. Um, I have a number of questions. I'll be as quickly, quick as possible. Suzanne, we've worked together for a long time. Um, I respect you, I like you, and, um, I think we've disagreed on a few things, but we've done it respectfully and, um, we've talked this last week and I think we exchanged some emails today that, or yesterday that were helpful. Uh, just have a few questions I'd ask to, um, be prepared for a couple of questions for open meeting laws. So if we could just talk about that, uh, I'd appreciate it. Uh, by the way, and I concur with Counsel Grow and the mayor. I was going to ask the same question. Who do you work for? And, uh, the fact that you answered, uh, he answered for you that it's the council, the mayor and all the boards and commissions. Um, that's helpful.
Counsel, let's, let's try to keep this to about two or three minutes. Okay. Cause we've got a big agenda and last meeting, I got a lot of grief because I wasn't quick enough to get through this. So I just ask that you try to stay um, to the point and, um, and, and keep this two to three minutes max. Thank you.
Have I been off point yet?
No, I'm just, but I'm just trying to control the timeframe. Thank you.
I understand. So I guess that goes to that first question. What is your interpretation of the rule that we just learned in the last month or so that counselors who attend standing committee meetings that they're not members of? So I'm on the budget and finance committee. I was at the O N A meeting, ordinance administration committee where you had your appointment reviewed. I would have asked questions there to save the full council this time. But my understanding is that I'm not allowed to. Can you confirm that ruling?
So with regard, so I can answer, so I would feel much more comfortable answering, um, the question generally as opposed to um, providing you an opinion with regard to an incident that occurred earlier, um, that there was a rule. So generally the open meeting law states that, um, any meeting of a multi-member board must be posted and noticed. Um, you have to give forty eight hours notice, the items that you're likely to discuss at that meeting. And when you have a subcommittee meeting, you're posting your notice of a subcommittee, um, that that subcommittee is going to be discussing the items on the agenda. When other members of the city council attend, and I know this has happened a number of times, attend subcommittee meetings and then you have the city counselors acting as a city counselor at a subcommittee meeting, you can, uh, you could potentially and can violate the open meeting law because then you have the city council as a multi-member body discussing a matter that hasn't been posted and an agenda hasn't been posted. So when it's a subcommittee meeting, then that meeting should be the subcommittee, um, who addresses matters before them. If there's a city counselor who's in attendance, they would be attendance as either somebody who's, um, you know, an observant, uh, an observer, but not necessarily participating as a city counselor because it's not a city council meeting.
So if I had more questions that I want to ask at the ordinance administration committee meeting, I wouldn't be able to do that either. This is the place to do those, ask those questions then. Is that correct?
You can always send your questions to one of the three counselors that are at the O N A meeting. That's certainly a provision that you have. If with some planning, um, that's done frequently. I do that a lot for behalf if I have a question that's coming up and I'm not on that standing committee.
Okay. So, um, are there any boards or commissions that are pointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council that do not follow open meeting laws?
That do not fa- you mean are not subject to the open meeting law?
No, that you are aware of that aren't following the law.
That aren't compliant with the law?
That's correct.
Um, n- not that I'm aware of right now. So one of the things that we're going to do after, so after February fourteenth, right, we, the council just reappointed and appointed new members. So we're planning to do a, um, to provide a training for the boards and commissions. And we're going to provide the training on an o- on the open meeting law, the public records law, state ethics, and then just your basic how to run a meeting. And right now, um, I'm able to do a lot more of this because I have this great new assistant attorney John, or assistant attorney who's, um, great to work with and he's working on a PowerPoint right now. That's going to address those three issues. And what I'd like to do is have a training for the boards and commissions that are sort of like-minded, you know, or have similar subject matter. And to provide that training to three or four at the same time. And then sort of cycle through all the boards and commissions. Because it is challenging for individuals who are appointed to a city board to understand the intricacies of the open meeting law and the public records law. And I do understand that some people do struggle with that. And I don't think that there has been a training or I know that the boards and commission handbook hasn't been updated since I think two thousand fourteen. So we're also going to be doing that and providing copies of that handbook to newly appointed members along with the training.
That's great. So if a board were meeting in private, the dis- may I continue?
This is your last question and then we're going to share the floor, Counsel Worthley.
And then you'll come back? Because I have a lot of questions and I think this is an important time to ask the questions. I can't ask them at committee meetings. I'd ask Counsel O'Hara to ask.
This, let me go back to what Counsel Grow said. We're, we're allowing questions right now. But, but actually this is for a reappointment right now. That's really the motion, but I'm, I'm trying to flex to be considerate to the questions, but we have a lot on the agenda tonight. We have a lot. We have several public hearings. We have fifty eight people that are on the call. So I'm asking that we share the floor. And, um, and right now.
We should go back to committee. If we, if we have more questions, the, the standing committees do the legwork of the full council. That's the point of the standing committees. If the que- there were no questions asked at that level for the, this appointment, and I don't mean that as disrespect to the councils who are there. But if we can't ask questions there, we're going to funnel our questions to another council, which I think is another violation of meeting laws. Basically, you're saying we have, I've got sixty seconds to ask questions of one of the most important positions in the city. I don't know. So let's share the floor. Anybody else who has questions?
Okay, um, who else hasn't spoken? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to speak on the, um, on the motion. I'll be supporting, um, Attorney Egan's um, reappointment. I was, I served on the private road repair working group. I was there with her for eleven meetings. The amount of work that she did between meeting was exemplary. She was always calling, uh, others, learning about more digging deep, talking to MMA folks, talking to folks that have other select boards. And really trying to, um, totally grasp all the intricacies of this very complicated matter that we're struggling with. So, um, I totally appreciate her tenacity. And, um, I've been working with Suzanne since I was on the school committee many, many, many years ago. And I've always found her to be completely objective, completely neutral, never feeling like she reports more to the mayor than she does to either the school committee in the past or the city council. And I totally appreciate that. So I will be supporting that. Um, so let's, um, let's, um, Counsel Nolan, I think you haven't spoken yet. So go ahead. You have the floor.
Um, I'd like to call for a vote.
Second.
Okay, so we have, um, Counsel Nolan would like to call the question and second of my Counsel Grow. Is there a discussion? Um, actually, we don't need, that doesn't, that's not just, we don't need to discuss that.
Calling the question is discussable. Calling the question is a discussable motion.
Calling the question is a discussable mom- uh, motion?
Yes. Um, we can discuss whether we want to call the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so let's have a discussion if we're ready to call the motion. Um, who would like to discuss this? Counsel O'Neal?
I think there are some questions that need to be answered and I think by stopping people from asking questions, it's not a fair and balanced meeting. I, I, I really, I, I want, I would like to know the answers to these questions. I, I don't have any questions myself. But I am learning and because they were not able to ask these at O N A, neither Counsel O'Hara nor Counsel Worthy were able to ask questions at O N A. They should be able to ask questions at city council. Otherwise, what are we doing here? Why are we here?
So, so, um, without objection, um, Counsel, I, I, I'd like to, um, allow Mayor Verga to speak because this appointment is his and, um, I'd like to.
It's important to realize that I personally reached out to both Counsel O'Hara and Counsel Worthley. And we discussed the issue, uh, neither, uh, well, Counsel O'Hara had mentioned no concerns about, uh, uh, Suzanne. I know that, that Suzanne reached out to both of them as well and offered to speak to them. And I do not believe that she got a call back from at least one of them. So the opportunity to speak was always there. I just want to offer that. Bringing it here in public after you've had the opportunity is just an opportunity for something else other than getting to the bottom of, of an issue. I just wanted to let the public know what's going on here.
Um, Counsel Grow.
Point of order, hang on.
What is your point, Counsel Worthley?
The mayor wants to let the public know what's going on here as his interpretation that this is something else. I haven't even asked, I have one question.
Um, can, go ahead, Counsel Grow.
I, 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 I believe we should move the question because frankly, at this point in this discussion, I haven't heard any questions that speak to the quality or the ability or the capability of our city solicitor to do her job. What we're hearing is we're hearing nitpicking questions about things that, that we don't have the full context for that have nothing to do with her capabilities as the city solicitor. And I, I frankly, I'm not, I, I'm not hearing questions that, that moves this discussion. Should we appoint this person as the city solicitor? I'm hearing questions about whether or not we're going to take issue with, with decisions that were made over the past year. If you have a problem with a decision, you have a problem with a decision. But that doesn't mean you should have a problem with the person who wrote that decision or came to that conclusion. The law is a complicated issue. Uh, in every, in every court case, you're going to have a winner and a loser, right? Both lawyers thought they were right. Now, we're going to have times where we don't necessarily agree with it, with the, with the, the, the opinion of the city solicitor. But I'm not a lawyer. None of us are lawyers and I think that we should defer to someone with the experience and the capability and the the, uh, the wherewithal to, to, to do the work that is necessary to make us understand what we're trying to to accomplish. And right now, none of that discussion is being, is taking place. We're, we're arguing over decisions that don't really are, aren't relevant to her position, which is why we should move the question.
Um, so is there a motion to move the question?
Yes.
Um, seconded by Counsel Memmar, made by Counsel Grow. Let's vote on moving the question.
No more discussion on that?
Counsel Worthley.
Well, Counsel Grow just said that, that he's hearing questions.
Okay, go ahead. You have the floor, Counsel.
He says he's hearing questions that are about something else. I've asked one question.
No, you've asked about. But go on. But go on.
I've asked one question.
Go ahead, ask another question. Go ahead.
No, what on the motion is on moving the question? So if, if this is not the time for us to be the checks and balances on the administration. Regardless of who is being confirmed, it could be for any board or commission, it could be for any permit. This is the body that is the checks and balances on the administration. So if I have three or four questions, I think this is the place to ask them. I can't ask them at the committee level. I can't ask them here and you say you'll hear any discussion about X. I don't hear any discussion.
Councillor, if you want to have a governance meeting, it sounds like this is a governance meeting. Maybe we need another governance meeting where we can talk about open meeting law. And this case law from the attorney general on the matter that you brought up. I mean, that seems like a very reasonable. That, that feels like a very reasonable matter with a purpose. With a separate governance meeting. We haven't had one since last March. So why don't we plan that? Because I think at this point, we'd like to move the question. So, let's, let's. Councillor O'Neill, you may speak because you've been patient. So go ahead. You may speak and then we're going to, we're going to. Take the role on this.
I would like, I would like to yield my time to councillor Worthy. I want to hear his questions.
Councillor Worthy, we'll give you one more minute because, because we are going to be here all night.
Point of order. Another minute on what? Are we talking?
Do it. Just let him get through it. Instead of you talking and her talking and me talking, just let him talk and get it over with. You're complaining about how much time this has taken.
No, I'm complaining about the topic that we're talking about councillor. The point, the, the, the motion on the table is the motion to move the question. Okay, that's what we're talking about. If you want to vote, if you want to vote against that, vote against it.
What is the question?
The question is, should we appoint, should we approve the appointment of the city solicitors who are term to expire till two fourteen twenty five?
Reappointment.
Reappointment, thank you.
So the motion on the table right now is to end the discussion. The motion on the table is to end the discussion, just to be clear.
Correct.
So I guess then brings the question up.
Okay, so, so the motion is to move the question. Roll call vote on moving the question. Councillor O'Neill.
I'm unclear of what that means.
If you don't, if you want to keep talking about this and you say no.
I'm unclear of what, what.
If you don't want, if you want, if you want to keep talking about this, you vote no, you don't want to call the question. So if you want to. So that is your, that is your choice right now. We're voting on this.
If we want to keep talking. If we want to keep asking questions, the vote is no. Is that correct?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, councillor Worthy.
No.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes, and I just want to point out that this is a perfectly legitimate use of Robert's rules. That this is not some abhorrent thing that has been invented here. This is a legitimate use of Robert's rules. And it is, it is. There to keep meetings going in order. That's all. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Councillor Grow, thank you.
I will always defer to Tony on Robert's rules. I vote yes.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memard.
I'm voting yes, and I would also, as councillor Grow just did, like to observe that the opportunity to ask questions. And pursue the discussion is at the subcommittee level. And any councillor is available to submit those questions to another councillor. Which they will welcome to address to whomever's before them on whatever matter. The fact whether you can speak in person or not. In no way limits your ability to ask questions.
Thank you, councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
No.
The yeses have it, six in favor, three opposed. So we are moving the question. So let's go back to.
I can invoke chart objection two eleven C.
Okay, councillor Worthy has called a two eleven C. Does everyone understand? Joanne, do you want to explain to the council what that means?
Yes, a two eleven C would move this. Matter to the next regular scheduled meeting. And it would start, it wouldn't start over. It would, I believe it would start at the end of this discussion.
Okay, so we'll get to the vote at the next, at the next meeting. Okay. So. How does that affect?
I would have voted yes.
Okay, so it was my fault councillor Worthy, of course. I would expect nothing other than you for saying that. I think we're ready to, to call the eleven C. We, we shouldn't discuss it anymore. It's councillor Worthy. And we can't, we can't vote. We have to wait until the next meeting.
There's no more discussion.
The president, I believe the vote was taken. I, I don't.
No, that was moving. That was moving the question. That wasn't on the appointment. Right? Is, I, I mean, I, I believe that that's correct. Okay, so I don't think, I think we have to honor councillor Worthy's right to call it two eleven C. Councillor Worthy, that, that you. That you did that. So. I guess that's it for this matter. So thank you. Okay. Councillor, I think we have to move on.
Do we have a city solicitor for the next two weeks?
It's a good point because her term to be just.
Yes, you do until, until the seat is filled, there you have six months.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you councillor Gross. Appreciate that. Okay, so let's, let's take a deep breath and let's call for the next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business would be the presentations. Greg Berger regarding updates from the mayor's office.
Councillor Nolan has just hand raised. Go ahead councillor Nolan.
Do we have to move on the rest of the consent agenda for the other appointments? Is it consent agenda?
That was previously approved.
We voted that. We only, only took off the two. So we are, we are cool with that. We don't look at the animal consent agenda councillor. Mayor Verga, are you prepared to continue with your presentation or do you have that commitment that you need to get to at West Parish?
No, yes, I'm prepared and no, I don't to get to the West Parish. I can take care of that tomorrow night. So thank you councillors. I, I don't remember the last time I did this, a presentation similar to this back in the. Spring, summer, possibly. There was an opportunity just to come and give you an update of what's going on from the mayor's office perspective. This is not an exhaustive list. It's not in any particular order. In the interest of. The, the people's time, I would ask that if there are any questions. You call me, email me. I'd love to sit down with each of you one-on-one. Been a while since I've done that with some of you. But I take it from the top. Just the top of my paper, not the top of importance. Summer planning efforts continue through the administration. The beach reservation system, which we all know was quite a success, took care of the traffic issues. The, the revenue was right on par with some of our best years. This year, we have a new vendor coming in. That was one of the. Weaknesses last year was the vendor, not to throw them under the bus, but we believe it's the vendor we've gone with. What will be interesting this year is a, a new system of plate readers to cut down on. The, basically, the, the folks at the gate going in with their cell phones to take pictures of the license plates. Cars will come through. And basically, green, go through, red, something's wrong. The kiosks, we continue to have meetings, different staff, department staff meeting. Pretty much weekly since we took office, trying to get to the bottom of that. But we do have a new service contract. Contract with the new service provider. So we are making progress on that. The goal obviously is to get them. So they won't be necessarily one hundred percent flaw free, but at least a vast majority, which has not been the case yet. We inherited a bunch of lemons on those kiosks, but we are making progress. And again, we'll be looking at new enforcement for parking. The, the city has a fleet of Nissan Leafs. Leaves, I don't know how you said the plural for those cars, but. The enforcement folks are going to have plate readers put on those and making their rounds, making their lives a lot easier. So. Still working on the plates. Sorry, the, the kiosk in the parking situation. Magnolia Pier, an update, some of you may have been made aware of it, but. The Army Corps of Engineers is reviewing our application to get the float and ramps system installed. There is a possibility, I now tell you, having all bold capital letters, possibility. That we could find a way for some communal dinghies off of the. Float system, definitely not off of the dock. Just want to throw that out there that we didn't slam the door on that. But by the spring, we have the funding in place already via a FEMA reimbursement. And hopefully by spring, permitting will be finalized and we can get started on the project. Boards and commissions, Suzanne mentioned training, that's something new that we're going to be doing this year. We have a new system in place. When we took off, we realized that there was several areas. There was something in the mayor's office, something in the state clerk's office, something online. With lists of the boards and commission members, they didn't all necessarily jive. So with the help of Melissa in my office and Vicky in I T, we've made a lot of progress on that. We will be having a list published soon. I'll be sharing with you folks. Where there's several dozen committees, openings on boards and commissions. Because the terms end today. There were several that chose not to be reappointed. And several that just had gone unfilled since before I got here. We tried our best to fill what we could. But there were some that slipped through the cracks, cracks on that. So new system, terms end today. There are remaining vacancies and once you guys get the list, please spread it, spread the word. Because there are a lot of. As Jeff's always talking about, volunteerism is, is the key here and we're going to need some more help to fill these boards and commissions. Is that a high five, Jeff? What was that? Budget season is kicking off soon. We're looking at level service, but we're still looking to invest in areas of need. I think the process you started with the ward meetings, getting some feedback from people is, is valuable to us. It, it is the mayor's budget, but we will be seeing what the priorities are, but we have. We have needs throughout the city. We're going to try to be as fair as possible and cover all the bases. Comprehensive planning initiative, also known as the master plan. The RFP should be going out soon for that. We have it funded through some opera funds. The process will be sort of spearheaded by Dave Fields in the community development department. It'll work its way through the planning board where they will actually assign someone who will be. The, the, the lead on that. We're looking to update a twenty-plus-year-old master plan. That was one of the things that was pointed out. Quite a bit during the last year's review of the zoning, proposed zoning changes that we needed to update the master plan. And I'm one hundred percent in agreement that that is needed. So we can get a good look at what's the ten-year. The goals and desires for our residents going forward and hopefully the next plan won't be twenty-five years from now. Opera funds still remain. Some of the categories are city buildings. We have approximately four point five million dollars plugged into that category. Right now, tentatively, that's to cover things like city hall. You guys voted recently to do funding for some city hall projects. There's more, plenty more to be done at city hall. So the extra money will be useful. The police station, which you heard has been. Police station project's been withdrawn. It will be making its way back with the help of money from the court system. And thanks to Bruce Tarnier, Margaret, some help from the state and some opera funds, we can make this. Project see it through and possibly, and I must stress the word possibly, money towards the legion. We'll have to look at the. The use of the legion and how and if opera will fit. But we do it to find a solution for that. Community initiatives is another one, another category from the opera funds, roughly a million dollars earmarked for that. We had about eight or nine nonprofit partners who participated in the listening sessions about opera money. So we need to reach back out to them, let them know how much we have in total. And we need some specific plans on how they plan to use the money because this has to be one time when I look at the fund positions. So partners out there, stay tuned. I plugged in a placeholder for about two million dollars for open spaces. We have a lot of open spaces. Two million dollars isn't going to go far, but for now, that's what we have as a placeholder. On the idea, a, a concept of open spaces, I did have a Zoom meeting with Heidi Wakeman, who chairs the open space committee. To talk about the open space plan and our commitment, I think collectively, council and the mayor's office of caring for our open spaces. And we appreciate the hard work that those volunteers did on the open space committee. A meeting this week with councillor O'Neill and others to talk about the Green Street project. I did email all of you several documents, drawings for Green Street. There is an RFP that will be hitting the street soon. The, as I mentioned at a B and F meeting, keep hope alive regarding the. Full bathrooms. It's still a possibility, not a slam dunk, but it's still a possibility. And we are moving forward with that as well. Vietnam Memorial, I'm sure you've all driven by down near the tennis courts, the boulevard. It looks great. Big thanks to Mike Hale and all the volunteers and all the partners who helped pull that together. We're planning, they are planning, the Vietnam veterans, a memorial day event to sort of kick off the, and unveil. Well, it's already unveiled. There's nothing covering, but official unveiling of the monument. It looks great with the, the pergola in place. And the lights will be coming in at some point and it's, I'd thank you again to all the people who, you know. Felt, and I think Mike was the guy that led the charge, Mike Hale. It was, it wasn't enough just to take the stone monument from the high school and plop it on the boulevard. You know, Mike really felt that it was important that. It be right on par with the World War Two memorial, and I think that they now complement one another and our Vietnam veterans deserve nothing less than that. That's kind of the, the gist of it. And as I said, this is not an exhaustive list, but that's where we're at. And if you guys have specific questions, you know, reach out to the office, reach out to me. You all have my cell number. And I'd like to set up one-on-ones with each of you to go to more detail. So with that, Madam President, hand it back to you.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This is the budget and finance standing committee report of February ninth.
So councillor Memard, you have the floor.
Great, thank you very, very much. We have three or four items for your consideration this evening from budget and finance. We'll go through them one by one with votes rather than doing a consent agenda since. There are not a lot of them here. The very first, number one is a memorandum from our city clerk. And a twenty twenty-three S A fourteen. In the amount of a hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents for a. Purchase of the binding machine used to assemble in-house. Our, what we call nosy books, annual street list books. Joanne, I don't know if you'd like to speak to that, just to give that little background, but this will save us money in the long run and provide some flexibility in the clerk's office.
Yes, so we were allotted just fifteen hundred dollars and it's been fifteen hundred dollars for a long time in our budget. For printing of the annual street listings, which we are required by law to print. And get, you know, sell to the public. And so what happened is that printing costs have escalated in the years. We're getting less of a product. For the amount of money that we're spending. So my assistant. City clerk Grace Poria did some research. And we found that we were able to reduce the cost of. Printing the annual street listings. Significantly and also probably do a. Like an on-demand type thing because sometimes the amount that we order, we either have a surplus some years or sometimes we sell out of them. And with the assistance of the I T department last year, we were able to give them the information. And. They were able to sort it and put it in a format in which we just sent it to the printer to just. Print the books and bind them. So and then after, we also found that if we do it in-house, we had a little glitch with our, our books this year, the way they were set up. And we were able to work with I T, fix it and then just. Provide whoever purchased one, the correct format. All the information is correct. It was just not. Alphabetically with the street order on some of the books. So we just figured we're going to try it in-house. The printing costs have escalated. We're getting less for our money. And we can just do it on demand and also the books are available like on a U S B port or a disc, C D disc.
Any councillor questions or shall I read the motion?
Please read the motion. Thank you.
On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, our budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to. Recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation. Twenty twenty-three S A fourteen. In the amount of a hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. From the city clerk dog license receipts reserved for appropriation fund transfers. To the general fund account number as noted. To the city clerk office equipment account number as noted. And this is for the purpose of purchasing a binding system for creating in-house annual street list books and I so move.
Tag in.
Motion made by councillor Memard, seconded by councillor Gross. Discussion councillors. Seeing none, I'll roll call vote councillor O'Neill.
Yes, and thank you.
Councillor Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Councilmember.
The second item from budget and finance. Relates to a memorandum from our chief financial officer requesting the acceptance of a donation from the Rotary Club of Gloucester. In the amount of two thousand dollars. And a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law forty four fifty three A, a cash donation. In the amount of two thousand dollars from the Rotary Club of Gloucester. For the purpose of sponsoring a new flagpole at Stage Fort. Excuse me, at Fort Conant at Stage Fort Park as part of Gloucester's four hundredth anniversary. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Worthley.
I just commented that members of the Rotary Club, including the former city council president Joe Schellino and Dr. Sheriff. Made a nice presentation to us all and we're very grateful for this work on their behalf, working with the city and. Creating a new flagpole opportunity at Stage Fort Park.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan. Counsel Nolan, go ahead.
I said, yes, it wouldn't have been. Yes, it would be Chris Stapleton, sing.
Okay, Chris with Chris today. Okay, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
And the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Councilmember.
Yes, the last two items from budget and finance are memorandums from the fire chief. Eric Smith requesting our acceptance of the fire department. The department's fire services fiscal year twenty twenty three student awareness of fire education or S A F E grant. In the amount of four thousand three hundred and eighty one dollars. And secondly, a senior safe grant in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars. And they're two separate motions, which I'll go right ahead with. These are repeat regular. Items that we receive programs. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council accept a state. Grant under Mass General Law forty four fifty three A, a fiscal year twenty twenty three school based student awareness. Of fire education, i.e. S A F E grant. From the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services. In the amount of four thousand three hundred and eighty one dollars for the purpose of providing fire and life safety education to school aged children. The grant period is through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and there is no local grant for this grant and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes, 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 yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
And the second part of this program is relating to the senior portion of it. And again, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Gross, budget and finance committee voted three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the city accept a state grant under Mass General Law forty four fifty three A, fiscal year twenty twenty three. Senior awareness for fire education, safe grant. For the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services. And this is in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars. And for the purpose of providing fire and life safety education to seniors. The grant period is through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and there is no local match for this grant and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
The ordinance and administration standing committee report of February sixth.
Counsel Nolan, you have the floor.
You're on mute, Sean.
Counsel Nolan, you are on mute.
Sorry, well, that number one is C C twenty twenty three zero zero six. Nolan, acceptance of M G L. Chapter forty one, section one, ten A, office hours on a Saturday. This involves some work in the clerk's office and different things that are going on. And I'd like to give the floor to our clerk, Joanne Sanos, if she'd like to give a minute to this.
So we are putting this forward to adopt the Mass General Law chapter forty one, one ten A. For office hours and this, this would apply to the elections. Registration to vote, which the Votes Act changed it from twenty days before an election to ten days before election and it's always on a Saturday. So this would apply only to the local elections. It doesn't apply to any other elections in which we will be able to move the. The register to vote day on a Friday instead of a Saturday to. For cost savings of overtime and also historically. A lot of people do not come in to register to vote anymore. There are other avenues that people can register to vote for. There's the online Secretary of State's office in which you can register to vote up until eleven fifty, fifty nine P M. And also through the registry of motor vehicles now you can register to vote. There's no more opting out to register to vote. You're automatically registered to vote. There's mail in forms and also you can come in person in the city clerk's office. The last election last year, we stayed open for two Saturdays. One before the primary and one before the regular election. And we had. No one come in for the primary election and we were open from nine to five. And then on the regular election, three people came in to register to vote. And everything else was done online or through mail or in person before that Saturday. So we're just requesting to change the. The registered to vote day to the Friday and we would be open from eight thirty to five P M. And this would cut down on overtime costs since there are other avenues that people can register to vote.
Excellent. Thank you, Joanne. Is there any questions or comments from the council before I read the motion? All right.
Counsel Grow.
Counsel.
Just for clarification, we're not reducing any days that can be used to register to vote. This is just shifting a day earlier in the same number of days to register votes.
Yeah, yeah, before they changed the, it was twenty days before an election. It was on a Wednesday and we were open from. Eight thirty A M to eight P M. And we found that no one came in to vote, I registered a vote either. We were open till eight P M. It's just moving a day. It's still, we still have to offer one day to register to vote. In person to come in and then we have to be open and it's just moving it from a Saturday to a Friday for a local election. That's all.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Joanne. So on a committee recommendation on a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counselor Nolan. The ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council vote to accept Massachusetts general laws. Chapter forty one, section one, ten A, office hours on Saturday. Section one, ten A, any public office in any city or town may remain closed. On any or all Saturdays as may be determined from time to time. In a city by city council, subject to the provisions of the city charter. Were in a town by vote or town at a special or regular town meeting. And the provisions in the sections nine of chapter four shall apply. In the case of such closure of any such office on any Saturday. The same extent as if such Saturday were a legal holiday and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion? Counsel Gross.
Yeah, just Joanne, you won't be closing at the normal twelve thirty on that Friday, though you'd be open all day.
Madam Clark, you are on mute.
Sorry, no, we will be open till five P M. Okay, we got clarification from the state that we do not have to stay open till eight P M. That we would have to offer nine to five, but we're open regular hours at eight thirty, so we would be offering eight thirty to five. And we will post and advertise that on the website and wherever we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, counselors? Okay, roll call vote, Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
I think. Does Sean have another one? Did I miss the motion for Abkembody? Did I miss that?
That's the one to announce now. Oh, okay, sorry. So that's Sean's report. So Counsel Nolan, you have the floor. My bad.
So on C C twenty twenty three zero one two. Counsel Worthley nomination and request the city council vote toward Fred Cowan. The Abkembody extraordinary performance in service award. With this being said, I'd like to share the floor with Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. So I had some notes in front of me, but we jumped this quickly. I think everybody here. Has had some experience with Fred Cowan. If you haven't, you've missed out. He considers himself a community volunteer, a full time community volunteer. And I can't think of someone more deserving, although there are many people in the city who deserve recognition. I can't think of someone more deserving. I think he spent twenty years almost consecutively. I think there was a one year he wasn't on the board of health. And that's a thankless job. I think I see. I think Claudia Schweitzer, who just finished her term, she's on here too, and she actually, I consulted with her when I wrote this. Order up and gave me a few other ideas of things that, ways that Fred had contributed to our community. I think in terms of everything we do in encouraging volunteering, the one piece we need to keep in mind is recognizing the people who do the most. Fred is someone who would not want attention. He's always said he's better supporting people who are doing the other work. But I think it's time we take a pause and maybe at appropriate time, once we go back in person, have a ceremony. Where we can recognize him again for all this service over the last thirty or forty years now.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this before I read the motion?
Counsel Gross and then the motion.
Just, just a quick comment. Thank you, Jeff, for putting this forward. There is a. More deserving person than Fred. I would just. Like to ask him, and I don't know if it's before or after the motion or after the vote or what, that we postpone presenting this to Fred until we are all in person.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Ditto. Counsel Nolan, so the motion is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. On a motion. By Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel O'Hara, the ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the city council award Fred Cowan. The Abkembody extraordinary performance in service award. And to add to what Counsel Gross said that we would. Recognize this at a future meet and when we can do it publicly. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there a discussion, counselors? I will be supporting this. I think that Fred is a great candidate. He serves on the council and aging board with me. He's done a magnificent job in the board of health. And he's incredibly dedicated to this community. So I'm supporting this. I'm glad that Counsel Worthley has brought this up. And. And I thank you for that. Counsel Nolan.
I too will be supporting this. Fred's been with the city for a long time and even before he was officially with the city, he always been long involved with the, the community. He may be a little astonished by this. He doesn't like to be recognized for his work. But sometimes we have to make someone take. Take the award for what they've done for us and. Because most of the great people out there don't want these awards. They'll, they'll accept them. We just have to force them to do it. And he's one of those people that does it for no self gain. Does it for the better of the community. And I think this is a great example of what this award is about.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Memard, I think I saw your hand raised.
Yes, thank you very much. Like many of you, I've had opportunities to work with Fred and appreciated his dedication to. A full range of aspects of life in our city. We overlapped serving on the board of directors of the Sawyer Free Library and Gloucester Lyceum. And it was a pleasure to work with Fred and enjoy all of his contributions and dedication. So again, this is so well deserved and thank you, Counselor Worthley, for bringing it forward.
I'd also like to just note that we need to get it inscribed before we do that in person meeting when we're back at Cairo. So Madam Clark, if you could take the initiative with that, that would be great. We'll look forward to that ceremony. So thank you. So I think. Think we've taken, have we taken the roll call vote? No, we haven't. So any further discussion before we do the roll call? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes, absolutely.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, thank you, Fred.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Madam.
Counsel Worthley, you have the floor.
If I could just make one comment on the award itself. There isn't a really clear process in how to nominate people. And I would like for us to somehow dig into figuring that out. Maybe prior nominees could be the people who. Pick the people who get it going forward. It hasn't been awarded in, I think. Eight or nine years and. I think Abkembody is the only person who received the award. It was posthumously. So there are a lot of people who deserve it. There's no solution. Just want to throw it out there for some discussion at some point to say, let's figure a way we can get more people recognized for the hard work that they do.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
It's the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of February eighth.
Counsel Grow, P and D Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just want to point out that we still haven't gotten into the meat of tonight's meeting yet. We have a lot more to go. The first issue we have is a communication from Essex County Green Belt requesting a conservation restriction for the Essex County Green Belt. Association for sixteen North Kilby Street. That is a donation. Well, it's not a donation. It's a, it's a conservation restriction. By the property owner to the Green Belt. It will remain in private hands. It is about twenty three or so. Plus or minus acres that will be restricted permanently for natural preservation. We have Maggie Brown from Green Belt is on the call tonight. If anybody has any questions. About it, it's, it's a fairly straightforward thing in terms of. Of our participation in the process. We do have to approve it if it's to go forward. If anybody has any questions, we can try to answer them.
And I see Greg Catamatorius on the call as well, so. And I see Greg Catamatorius on the call as well. So um, Joanne, if you don't mind bringing Maggie in in case councilors have questions, that would be great. Um, so um, Council Grow, I'm turning it back to you to lead this part of the meeting.
Yeah. Do we get any questions? Councilor O'Neill?
Yes, thank you. Um, so hold on, sorry. I'd like to know what is, what is the development value of this property? Do we know that?
Um, if you all can hear me, I hope you can.
Maggie, would you introduce yourself to us and um, the position? That would be great and welcome. Thank you for being here.
Of course. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Maggie Brown, Land Conservation Project Manager at Essex County Green Belt. Um, development of value of the property uh, would have to be determined by an appraisal. Um, and to speak speculatively, uh, the, the frontage is narrow, the property is quite ledgy. Um, uh, I'm not an expert to say how much more it could be developed, but likely not much further.
Okay, so where, when you get, when she's transferring, what happens with the developable rights? Where do they go?
They go to Green Belt.
Um, they go to, they go to Green Belt. Okay.
Yes. Yep.
And am I correct in saying that Green Belts can sell them to anyone if they choose?
Uh, no, that, that is not correct. Um, so Green Belt by uh, the nature of our um, status as a five oh one C three nonprofit. Um, and due to the nature of this conservation restriction, um, beholden to uh, the state executive office of energy and environmental affairs, um, we would not be able to sell the development rights. Um, that, that would be risking our um, status as a nonprofit and contrary to um, the mission and charter of the organization.
Okay, um, am I to understand that the owner retains ownership, correct?
That's right.
And there will be no public access to this property, correct?
Uh, that is correct. Um, it is not disallowed by the conservation restriction, but like any other private property, it remains um, up to the decision of the landowner whether or not public access is allowed.
Okay, um, they will still be um, living in the, the building envelope? Is that correct?
Uh, close. Uh, so the house um, that the owner lives in is excluded from the conservation restriction. It's to the left of the building envelope that's shown on the map. The building envelope cap area captures um, buildings, but they are not homes. Um, there is a, a shed, a barn, and a small cottage. Um,
Well, cottage is a home, right?
Correct, but no one's living in it. Um, the build, the, the residential building is uh, within the parcel, but it is to the left of that building envelope area.
Right, and so they can, they can um, rebuild that cottage, right?
To an extent, to an extent, um, they have uh, uh, the ability to maintain and to a certain extent, expand the cottage um, within the conservation restriction.
Do they have the ability to sell that one point two acres in the building envelope?
No.
Okay. Um, I do have one more question, but I can't find it right now. So um, can we go, come back to me in a few minutes if that's okay?
Yeah, if there's nobody else's questions.
Thank you.
One question.
Council Worthley?
Yes, um, hang on. Uh, thank you. I attended the planning development committee meeting and obviously we can't ask questions there, but I would have asked this question if I had the chance. Um, first, thank you, Maggie, for being part of this and meeting tonight and your presentation um, at P and D. If the property isn't very easily developable, if that's a word, it's not able, it's not able to develop very easily.
Right.
Um, it would likely be in the same condition, the same state and preserved without this. Um, I saw that there's a condition for some public gain or some public purpose. And I would like you to speak to that because it's not clear to me what the public purpose is if the public can't access it.
Right, so yeah, great question. Um, it is not for, well, this is uh, you know, like I said, would have to be determined by an expert, but if we're talking about the property as um, not further developable, what we're talking about is um, further subdivided for residential development. On the other hand, uh, a future private owner could um, develop you, all sorts of amenities on the property, right? Tennis courts, swimming pools, whatever one is able to develop. Um, uh, this conservation restriction restricts that further development um, of impervious surfaces and impacts to the uh, natural resources of the property. Um, the property as it stands has beautiful intact forests, um, wetlands, bernal pools, um, and contributes to the uh, resource function of the existing open space. And so further imp- impervious surfaces uh, withstand to be a detriment to the existing open space. Um, I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
It does, to a point. I just want to make sure because I may be misunderstanding this. They're giving away or, or giving away the development rights of twenty-three acres, but they're keeping the part of the property that they're living on. Um, and you're saying that they can't read, they can't redevelop the property, the part that they're living on, even with this twenty-three acres is given away. I'm trying to understand how, like you said, the tennis court, they could still put a tennis court on their property. They're part of the property they're keeping, right?
Yep, okay, so yeah, um, on the right track. So they are keeping the entire property. Just want to be clear about that. The development rights um, are being granted uh, through the conservation restriction um, on the majority of the property. If they were able to, you know, if a future uh, owner were able to fit some sort of um, expansion within the uh, area around the residential house, um, tennis court, whatever that may be. Um, they would have the ability to do that. Yes.
So I just want to understand what the public gain is aside from obviously preserving the natural environment is important to the public. I'm never going to disagree with that. But the public can't access it. Um, what you're saying is they could sell their exist, the part that they're living on, they could sell it in a different developer coming and try to make something happen in that small piece, but the larger piece, which you said was not very easily developed, would now have other restrictions. Is that the right way to understand this?
Yeah, so um, you know, regarding public access, um, lots of conservation lands uh, don't have public access, don't lend themselves to public access. Those that do um, are great to have it. This is one that doesn't particularly lend itself to public access and is still owned by a private, private individual, of course. Um, it, the, the conservation restriction runs with the deed. Um, so it is permanent. Uh, so any future landowner um, could expand to the extent of the C R, um, or sorry, expand um, in the area outside of the conservation restriction. Um, but the conservation restriction area um, in yellow on the map provided, um, those restrictions stay in place. If, if I understood your question.
I think you did. I'm just having, I'm having difficulty understanding one part here. And it's just maybe it's me, okay? Um, if the public can't access it, it's not developable as it is. We, the, the owner of the property um, pays thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars in tax taxes currently. I'm going to make the assumption that if they give up the conservation or have these conservation restrictions on it, then because it's less easily developable, the tax rate would go down. And so what have we done? We've preserved someone's, and I'm not being sarcastic here because I, I haven't done a site visit, but we're preserving someone's backside yard. And they're paying less taxes. But how have we helped the public? It's, it just seems right then the rest of the property owners are subsidizing someone else's property or their, you know, view or the, the nature behind their property. So it's just, it doesn't feel like, this is not Ravenswood Park. This is not Dogtown. This is not um, Babson giving us a reservoir. This is someone's yard.
Okay, we moved our questions to, to, to deliberation. I think if you still.
I wasn't deliberately. I'm trying to see if that's correct. So is that true? I mean, let me play that game. Is that true that, that we're subsidizing someone's backyard? Is that true?
So the tax value of the pro, the taxable value of the property, I believe, um, is largely in the value of the home. Um, so this conservation restriction likely wouldn't impact the taxable value that much. Um, every, every city and town does it differently. Um, but the majority of that taxable value is, is within the home. Um, that's on the property. Uh, what this is doing in the public benefit is preserving the uh, stormwater, natural um, uh, buffer abilities of intact uh, wooded land. Um, for uh, yeah, stormwater um, mitigate flooding mitigation, drinking water uh, quality, um, habitat value. Um, the natural resources of the land um, in a uh, a, a chunk of land um, that is pretty significant um, for this area of the world. Um, and the, 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 the private landowner um, is, you know, they could choose to not develop this land without giving a conservation restriction, but they're doing, you know, the value of granting a conservation restriction is that it will stay that way. Um, not just for this person who's granting the conservation restriction now, but for um, the community of Gloucester going forward.
You've answered my question, Ms. Brown. Thank you.
Councilor, Council Gross.
So um, I know this is supposed to be for questions and I'll ask the que, so as I read it, there's only like one and a half acres of wetland. Um, and this is to the public benefit piece. And um, as far as I can tell, looking at sites around Gloucester, there isn't a piece of land here on this rock that is not developable. Um, you know, provided you can go by uh, past environmental restrictions. This is on sewer. Um, so it does have limited frontage. So I think the public benefit then, you know, by calling it undevelopable land is a little bit unfair. I think the public benefit is is seen through that um, through that lens. I just, I just had to point out that that, that's definitely a piece of this. Um, and also it still will be taxable, yes, at a lower rate. But if you look at that neighborhood and its value at one point two million dollars now, it's not going to lose a whole lot of value.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Is there a question mark at the end of that?
And uh, that's what I thought I thought.
Okay, there you go. Council O'Neill, you second bite of the apple.
Thank you. Um, so Council Worthley asked the question that I was going to ask. Basically, how much real estate taxes is Gloucester going to lose, right? And is it, uh, my understanding that the owner lives in Maine, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, um, Council Gross, you said it's on sewer. My understanding that was that it was not on sewer. So ma, um, Ms. Brown, can you, can you help me with that? And is there road access to this property?
Um, I would, I would defer to um, uh, you all as the experts in the city as to whether or not it's on sewer. I don't know about whether it's on, not, whether or not it's on sewer. Um, the road access to the property is North Kilby Street.
Okay.
North Kilby Street is on sewer. So I would assume that that property is on sewer or has a potential to be on sewer.
Thank you. So I think I have one more question. Um, Ms. Brown, thank you for indulging me. The conservation restriction runs with the deed. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, do, do the developmental rights run with the deed in perpetuity? Or do they run with the property? Is, are the developmental rights? Um, do the developmental rights stay with the property in perpetuity?
Yeah, so the development rights are going with the conservation restriction to Green Belt. Um, and that lasts in perpetuity. Um, is that, is that clarifying? I might not be understanding your question correctly.
Right, so, right, so my concern is obviously the developmental rights. So I want to make sure that I have this straight in my head. Okay? So the developmental rights go with the conservation restriction,
Hmm.
which goes to, both of those go to Green Belt.
Yeah, I, yeah, another way of saying it, um, not to interrupt you, but just to rephrase, another way of saying it is the development rights for that area, um, the conservation restriction area are being extinguished um, by going to Green Belt or, or by placing the conservation restriction.
All right, so Green Belts cannot sell those because you mentioned previously it would be illegal, basically?
Absolutely, yeah. Um, talking about the development rights as going to Green Belt is one way of phrasing it, but really what's happening is they're being um, removed or extinguished for that area, for that conservation restriction area.
How do you remove? I don't, I'm not understanding removal of developmental rights.
Well, the conservation restriction is making development of that area. Um,
Null and void.
Restricted, yeah, null.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm going to ask a clarifying question, which I think you're, you're trying to get to. Great, if, if, if the owner of this property turns around after this restriction is, is signed and, and, and done, and decides to sell the property to Joe Halliard, Joe Halliard cannot come in and build three hundred apartment units in North Kilby, sixteen North Kilby. There's just, there's just no chance that you're going to be able to develop that property as a residential or commercial property in the future.
Correct. This conservation restriction is permanent. Um, the private landowner has the right to sell the property, but it remit, the conservation restriction remains with the property forever. Um, can that, the area with covered by the C R cannot be developed.
Can it ever be uh, reversed?
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts makes it extremely difficult um, to reverse a conservation restriction.
Good. And can I ask also, is this, is this the only conservation restricted property in Gloucester?
No, um, if, if you look at the map that was provided, um, uh, Green Belt also holds a conservation restriction just to the east. Um, uh, Green Belt holds um, a number around Gloucester, but just to the east of this property. Um, there's a, there is an existing conservation restriction.
Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions? Uh, Council O'Hara?
Why is the owner electing not to allow the public access? Because by what we're talking about tonight, where although you're, you're, and I'm not questioning your claim that majority of the taxes are on the residence versus on the land. Um, the city does collect a dollar value on that land. We, we are, as I think Council Worthley may have mentioned, we, we as, as a city are going to take that off the, the tax roll. So again, why does the owners elect not to allow the public to access the property if they expect the city to to um, accept this?
Yeah, so the um, the reduction in taxes is up to the city of Gloucester um, based on uh, the reflection in value or if the impact um, that the conservation restriction has on the value of the property. Um, and what is being given up here um, is the right to develop that property, um, the right to uh, create impervious surfaces on that property, um, which performs a uh, a, a, a public um, benefit uh, pri, by providing this natural resource. Um, what's not being given up is the public access. What's not being given up is the public access. So the, any reduction in tax rates would be reflecting the given up of development value, not giving up the right to restrict public access on their private property.
All right.
Any other questions?
Did she answer the question?
No, she didn't answer my question.
Yeah?
No, 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 I asked specifically, why is the owner electing not to allow the public onto the property?
Why?
And because, well, because it is their right to do so as a private owner. They, they're not, you know, this isn't a property that's yeah, being opened by an organization such as Greenbelt or the town, one that allows public access. So it's, it's quite common for conservation lands that are held by private individuals to not be open to the public. As, as any other private owner might not have their property open to the public.
Thank you.
Let me ask, I'm gonna ask one last question, and that is, it, it, that public private access issue isn't also permanent. It can be in the future decided that it would be open to the public, open for trails, for hiking, other uses at some other point. That, that's a choice that could be made in the future, depending on who owns it or, or a change of mind.
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
So, so may I just add, because that's my word, if, so there's a lot of trails back there where the public owner allows the, the public to access through their properties. There's a lot of spots that occur like that in this whole network. So that is definitely a possibility.
All right. We good to go? We got one more, Tracy. Last one?
Please bear with me, I just wanna go over this one more time. The developmental rights are going to Greenbelt, and Greenbelt cannot sell those developmental rights to anyone else? Is that correct?
That.
Can I speak? Tracy, don't talk about.
Tony, you have something to say?
Yeah, Tracy, I, I looked up developmental rights in Gloucester. There is no transferable developmental rights in Gloucester.
Oh, wait, 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 you mean it's not allowed?
We do not have any sending or receiving zones in our zoning. There is no.
Not yet, though. Not yet.
Yeah, yeah, if I can jump in, that's a, that's a great topic. I'm very interested to hear more. However, the, this, the conservation restriction is not transfer of development rights. I shouldn't have used the phrase going to Greenbelt, because really what's happening is the development rights are being extinguished by the conservation restriction. Transfer of development rights is a, is a separate, you know, real estate technique and function.
Okay, they're being extinguished by the conservation. Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We, we good now?
Good.
All right. So if there's no further questions, I will go to the motion, which was on a motion by, oh, that's, that's the wrong motion. On a motion by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor O'Neill, Planning and Development voted two in favor, one opposed, to O'Neill, to recommend that the City Council approve a conservation restriction from Kinley Gregg to the Essex County Greenbelt Association Incorporated, Incorporated, for a property of 23 plus or minus acres at 16 North Kilby Street, map 157 lot 15, for the purpose of the preservation of a natural resource of the city and being in the public interest pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 184, Section 32, and I so move.
Second.
Moved in second, moved by me, seconded by Counselor Gross. Any discussion on the motion? No? Counselor Gross?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I did speak with the Assessor's Office today to find out what the tax ramifications would be. There still is tax on this land. It does not come off the rolls. They cannot figure out what the formula for the tax is until after this gets settled with the Registry of Deeds. It's just, they just can't by law do that. So, because they can't, you know, act before something takes place. So it, there is, and like I said earlier, this is, this is not, you know, this neighborhood, they're gonna still maintain outside of the zone over, you know, 1.1 and a half acres on their, their building lot, and then another 1.2 acres, you know, in the zone that they're allowed to expand the buildings from 750 feet to 1,000, and the other building from 800 and something feet to 1,000. But other than that, they still, taxes are still going to be paid on this property. There will be a little bit less, but it's not going to hit the taxpayers as much, as hard as, as it may be thought. That's all.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes, thank you for allowing some questions. I came in this, to this a little unsure. Ms. Brown, you were very helpful in answering these questions. It could be argued that the taxable value might go up, actually, right? If there's a conservation commission saying this is permanently gonna be natural environment, that might make the value of the, where the house is even more. So I, I don't see this as a, I, I misspoke when I said, is this sort of subsidizing someone's backyard? It's not. It's the owner of the property is paying taxes still, and conserving that land for natural environment is, is in the public's interest. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Gumm, and this is in your word. You wanna weigh in?
No, I, I completely support this. I think it's the right thing to do. I, I've driven by there. The, the roads are very, very narrow and turny, and, and I think that this is a good, good decision. So I will be supporting this.
I, okay, anybody else? Just very quickly, I'm, you know, I, I think some of the discussion about this, we neglect to, or we, we forget to remember that there are already a, a great number of acres of, of Gloucester that are, are held in private conservation restrictions, including a couple of big ones, the Sportsman's Club and, and Bass Rock's Golf Club. Now, I don't know the specifics of their access points, but these are definitely privately held properties that are subsidized by the taxpayers by, by virtue of the fact that they pay a lower tax rate than others. And, and so we have to weigh off the benefits sometimes that, that a few thousand dollars in, in, in dollars may, may translate into preservation of land that is, is never, ever going to be developed. And that's, that is, that is in its own self a benefit. So I support it. Any other discussion? Roll call vote? Oh, sorry, I'm taking your job there.
Okay, I will take over in the roll call. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Neill?
Yes.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yep.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memmer?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Maggie Brown and Greg Katamatory, thank you for being here, and thank you for being patient. Happy Valentine's Day.
Let's thank Kinley Gregg, who's on the call here, in, in watching the proceedings. Next item is a letter from St. Peter's Fiesta Committee requesting permission to use St. Peter's Park and Rogers Street on June 21st through 25th, 2023. I have to ask, John, I forgot to ask you this. I, I aired in, in, in my thing by putting this on the, on the agenda. So this is my fault that this is here. So we can go fairly quickly through it.
Right, and I think we can also waive the, the reading of the condition.
Conditions, yeah.
So, yeah, I would, go ahead.
So unless there's any objection, I'm gonna read Committee Recommendation on a Motion by Counsel Gilman, Seconded by Counsel O'Neill, Planning and Development voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommended the City Council allow the 2023 Annual St. Peter's Fiesta commencing on Wednesday evening, June 21st, 2023, through Sunday, June 25th, 2023, for the purpose of conducting the St. Peter's Fiesta on the days and dates mentioned herein, and allowing the St. Peter's Fiesta Committee from June 21st through June 25th, 2023, to have the use and control of St. Peter's Park on Rogers Street, the streets and sidewalks of Rogers Street, from Mansfield Way to the entrance of Commercial Street, including the dock deck area behind 11 Rogers Street, Commercial Street up to the Fort Square, and from the intersection of Main and Washington Streets to St. Peter's Park, and on Friday, June 23rd, Saturday, June 24th, and Sunday, June 25th, on only the waterside of Stacy Boulevard, from 30 Western Avenue, the Tavern, the Fisherman's Memorial, and the Shermataro Jim, Jimalaro Playground at Fort Square for the purpose of conducting the St. Peter's Fiesta on the days and dates mentioned above, with the following conditions, which we will waive the reading of, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counsel Gilman. Any discussion on this? Anybody wanna say vote no to the Fiesta? Go ahead, I dare you. The only thing I will say is that there was a, a request by Oak and Ember to have a conversation with the organizers of St. Peter's Fiesta, and the organizers have agreed to, to work with them to ensure that their decent business is, is allowed to, to, to remain open and unfettered. So that will be on the record there, and that would be the only additional condition that was, was part of the process. You wanna go for it?
Sure. Roll call vote. Counselor O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memmer?
Yes. This is the Fiesta, Fiesta, easy for you.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed.
That's it for my stuff, until we get to the public hearings.
Thank you, Counsel. Next order of business, Madam Clerk, and I'd just like to recognize Holly Doug Willow, our HR Directors of the Call, and Pam Toby, who is the Director of Communications and Constituent Services on their Valentine's Day. So thank you for being on the call. Counsel Nolan?
I'd like to ask, take a five minute before we get into the public hearings.
Okay, so let's take a five minute break. We need to, we need to do a motion for this. Is there a second on Counsel Nolan? Okay, Counselor, I think that was Grow. It is now 8:22, so let's say 8:27, need to do a roll call. It will be back at 8:27. Roll call vote, please. O'Neill?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Gilman, yes. Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Majota?
Yes.
Memmer?
The dog needs to go out, yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Okay, nine in favor, zero opposed. Let's take a five minute break. I'm back. Me too.
What?
My husband has a Valentine date with our dog right now. That's so.
That's great. We're still live, by the way.
I know, that was rated G.
Okay.
We still have 51 people on the call.
I hope they're refreshed.
Is everybody back? Counsel O'Hara, O'Neill, would you show your faces so we can start on the public hearings? Okay. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2022-34, Loan Order 2022-009, Loan Authorization, the amount of $19 million for the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse Facility renovation, continued from 1/24/23.
I move to withdraw Public Hearing 2022-034, Loan Order 2022-009, Loan Authorization, the amount of $19 million for the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse Facility renovation, without prejudice, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made. Motion's made, um and seconded by Counselor. Think it was uh Memard. If I heard it correctly, yes. Um, any discussion, Counselors? Um, Counsel Grow.
Yeah, I'm I'm maybe there's no need for this, but is there a reason why it's being pulled back? Is it is it part of what the mayor said? There's a reorganization of the funding? Okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, um, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
You're on mute.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Counsel Gilman, yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four rezoning twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six. To amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance by deleting section five point five lowlands and replacing it with a new section five point five floodplain overlay district. And amend sections one point five, one point eight, five point eight, five point nine. And five point one five to introduce potential flood-related impacts as permit review criteria.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask that the applicant. Greg Catamatory speaks to us on this amendment.
Good evening, Greg Catamatory, Planning Director, not the applicant. This was initiated by the Planning Board. Um, but certainly did a lot of work on it. Um, so I'm going to provide a hopefully succinct presentation. Um, hopefully you're not seeing this for the first time. I've probably given about seven presentations in some form on this on this topic. Um, over the last five, six months. Um, including a couple recently at P and D, so at least there's three members that um experienced the full hour of power. But I will certainly try to um keep this presentation much less than that. So I'm going to share my screen.
I told him it wouldn't be more than eighty minutes.
Okay, that's that's fair. It will not be more than eighty minutes, hopefully a lot less. Um, so if everybody can see my screen, okay. So here we are at the public hearing uh of the City Council on the proposed zoning amendments that were just announced. Um, I'm just going to go through quickly through the process timeline. How we got here, a little bit of context for this work um past and present. And also um the existing floodplain, just to make sure that people are aware of what we're talking about as as we're proposing. Um, to regulate some uses differently in this area, but it exists now. It will probably exist in the future in a different form. Um, but it's something that uh anybody with a coastal property is probably pretty familiar with. Um, the regulatory approach, uh we did work with some consultant support. Um, to come up with uh some of the proposals that you're seeing, but also I will um be very clear in that um the majority of what's being proposed. Is mandated to be um adopted. To continue our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program and to allow um homeowner owners to be eligible for uh flood insurance. Um, then I'll go into a little bit of site plan and special permit requirements where which are a little bit different than the floodplain overlay district. Um, and then I'll conclude um with some time for questions, some sure folks will have them. Um, so this was submitted to the City Council from the Planning Board back in December, on December thirteenth. Um, it was immediately uh referred back out from the City Council to the Planning Board. And the Planning Development Standing Committee. Um, the Planning Board held its public hearing on January fifth and their recommendation was sent to the council. And then more recently this year, um, the P and D Committee uh reviewed it over two meetings on January eighteenth. And February eighth, and so what you have this evening. Um, most of the amendments have been unrevised, um they're in their original form. Um, since uh they were initiated by the Planning Board, but there have been some revisions to section five point five, so you have a draft that reflects. The date of the Planning and Development Standing Committee meeting on February eighth. And I'll review those changes um because they are um really the they probably the most important parts of um the proposed ordinance. And here we are, and we will take as much time as we need for the council to come to a conclusion on this. Um, so a little bit of context, um this was provided, you know, at the really in the beginning stages of um discussing. Different approaches. Um, it's really because we're all aware, um there's a number of properties in the community that are at risk of flooding from coastal storms. Um, and and that is reflected in in um also how. The National Flood Insurance Program responds after um significant events. Um, in paying out uh claims, and so this was just one kind of highlighted statistic from nineteen twenty nineteen. Um, that Gloucester is one of the communities that is sometimes hardest hit by coastal storms. Um, and had claims that were in excess of seven million dollars, you know, in sixth place in the state. Um, we've been talking about these areas and their vulnerability for quite some time through planning efforts. Um, and so they all kind of lent led towards recommending that. Um, the city consider uh regulating these areas in a in a more formal way. Um, than through the existing permitting processes that we have. Um, so these are just the examples of of, you know, how this discussion has continued to evolve. Um, back in twenty fifteen, we did a climate change uh vulnerability assessment and adaptation plan. That was really focused on on the vulnerability of municipal assets. But clearly in that process, we're looking at um the entire community and it's clear. Um, from the mapping products that we had based on predictions that. Um, it's not looking like it's getting better, and I think uh, you know, from. The last decade, uh there's certainly been storm events that um have exceeded. Some of the events of the past and they're only predicted to get worse. Um, this isn't supposed to be a gloom and doom. There are, there are, there are solutions. Um, we also conducted the uh MVP planning process back in twenty eighteen, and again, these uh all kind of continue to lead towards. Uh assessing how we uh regulate uh activities in these high-risk areas. And then the Open Space and Recreation Plan that was just completed last year, as well as the Climate Action Resilience Plan, continue to kind of. Um, just hammer home the 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 time is now to have these discussions and make decisions. Um, so that's what we are here for this evening. Um, so so just some excerpts, again, the MVP planning process um called out to look at updating zoning regulations. The Open Space and Regulate Open Space and Recreation Plan also specifically talked about. Limiting um residential development in high-risk areas, which is exactly what this proposal would do. Um, and then also the car plan, again, really hammering home the need to minimize risk. Um, for a number of reasons which are also stated in the in the purpose of the proposed ordinance. Um, so just a familiar eyes people, you know, just kind of in a cross section of any coastline. Um, in Gloucester, um they don't always have a uh real high-risk zone, which is known as a V-zone. Um, these are areas, if you're thinking about the community along the back shore, along Magnolia Shore, along North Gloucester. Um, areas that really can see the the full impact of the Atlantic or the impact of a a nor'easter. Um, where uh the the coast is battered with uh, you know, waves that are generally in excess of uh three feet in height. And then there are other areas, again, still of of high risk, um but not with that, um the power of those those bigger waves. Um, known as A-zones, and when you think of an A-zone, you'd think along the coastline. Uh, the Anasquam River, um which is predominantly um all an A-zone uh flood zone. I also have this little area that's identified a little bit beyond the A-zone, it says future risk. Um, the proposed uh outlined ordinance that I'm going to talk about um also looks a little bit into the future. Um, in those particular areas, uh it would only be something that would be used. As um an educational piece for folks that might have property in areas that might be at risk in the future. It's really to make them uh acknowledge that that this could occur in the future. Um, and also to give them information that we have. Um, they may make different decisions about how they potentially develop land or not. But we want to make sure that they're clear that um this is information that we have that. On those areas are predict- are predicted to be impacted in the future. Um, if anybody wants to see uh a particular property, we do have. The mapping layers from FEMA on our online GIS, so if you go to the city's homepage and scroll down to the eight buttons that are. Um, further down, click on area maps. Um, and then you can toggle uh the the flood zones on and off. Um, I will say though, um the address at the bottom of the screen is the official um. Repository of the FEMA flood maps. Um, the FEMA Map Service Center, and that's their web address. You take uh, if you plug in that address, you or plug in that web address, you can literally just put in a properties address. In a box and it will pull up um the depiction of the current FEMA flood maps. Um, so this is what it would look like if you went through our city website. Um, and went to the top and clicked on themes and that would drop down this menu on uh the right-hand side. And then go under flooding, you can toggle uh the FEMA flood zones on and off. Um, again, I always say will indicate either look at the physical maps that are are at the city clerk's office at um Community Development or in the Conservation Office. They are the official maps. Um, or go to the FEMA website, we've done our best, but. Um, not all the information that's on our city website was produced in the same manner, so there's definitely a little bit of shift. Um, so again, go to go to the official resource if you want to see exactly how floodplain is depicted on a property. Um, again, I talked about the Anasquam River is mostly an A-zone. Um, it also identifies an elevation and that's that's where it's predicted to potentially flood in a in a one percent chance event. Um, again, there's, I won't go into a lot of detail, I think people. Uh, may or may not um have familiarity with um how FEMA um predicts those. And people will say, well, it it's happened, you know, the last five years, or it's happened twice in the same year. Again. It's a predicted storm that could occur on a one percent chance in a year, but again, um. It's it's all, it's all a law of averages and odds, um it it certainly can happen more than once. Um, and that frequency again is predicted to be um at a greater recurrence um with uh future conditions. Um, and again, just trying to distinguish and and familiarize people with the VE zones and the A-zones. Um, these are in depicted in this kind of light blue. Um, thinking along the back shore where those areas again would have. Um, waves in excess of three feet. Um, and then beyond that, there's there's uh typically an A-zone. Um, again, because the shoreline acts as a way of dampening that energy as it as it impacts the shoreline. So, um, as was read by um Joanne, um, these are the areas of the zoning ordinance that we are proposing to amend. Um, including section five five, which is currently the lowlands ordinance. Um, which is particularly outdated, um it only has three provisions. Um, and written was really kind of put in place a a long time before. Um, a lot of the consideration of how these areas should be regulated. Um, it is even has, I think, some continued um antiquated references that are no longer um utilized. And so we are looking to modernize that into a new section five five floodplain overlay district. Um, and again, uh I will speak to ninety-five percent of this ordinance. Is something that um was developed in coordination between FEMA, the National Flood Insurance Program, and the State Office of Floodplain Management. Um, as a requirement for communities to adopt. As their maps are next updated, so we are a little bit ahead of the curve. Um, in in examining this now because our our next iteration of mapping is a couple of years out. Um, so we won't have to revisit the consideration of adopting um the mandatory sections. Um, but there are areas that we're certainly going above and beyond, and I'll be specific about that as well. Um, we are also again talking about a district that's a combination of the FEMA flood zones that I just showed you. And then also some reference mapping that's looking at future conditions of flooding. Um, again, those areas that would be added beyond the FEMA flood zone are really advisory um to anyone that's buying property. Um, they may want to think about how they cite things and maybe. Look at the elevation of the property and consider um how they can limit their potential risk in the future, but there's no. Guideline or requirement that they absolutely have to adhere to its advisory. Um, and those two mapping uh pieces are the future flood risk district map. Um, and one shows the potential depth of flooding and the other shows the probability of flooding. Um, we will um and we will be getting uh these these mapping resources that have been developed by the state. Uh, and also show them on the city website in a similar manner that we've done with uh the FEMA mapping. Again, those areas will be advisory. And then uh throughout the zoning ordinance, uh again, making the consideration of future flood risk. Um, and potential impacts in in the all the ways that we permit through special permitings, through site plan. Um, and other other specific types of uh special permits. Um, there have been provisions added to include submission requirements that people have to show. A permit granting authority, what the potential flooding impact is. In both of those two zones, the FEMA flood zone as well as the future risk area. Um, and it would now be a part of both site plan and special permit criteria. Um, for the permitting bodies to consider those impacts um in their decision-making. Um, again, uh I I I kind of peppered in some questions that have come up along the way. Um, just again, to put this into context. Um, if we failed to adopt this when we're required to do so, it puts. Um, policyholders at risk, the community at risk. Is our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, so that's that's a very uh. I consider a pretty big stick. Um, we have um several hundred property owners, commercial and residential that carry policies. Um, it is a benefit to them to limit their risk and also. Um, have the ability to apply for claim if damaged. Um, so it's pretty important to uh remain in good standing. Uh, but again, you know, there's also some considerations that we'll be discussing that are above and beyond what's required to be adopted. Um, so I think the purpose of the floodplain overlay district is pretty clear. Um, ensure public safety through reducing the risk of threats to life and personal injury. Eliminate hazards through emergency response officials. Um, you certainly don't want to send anyone out that doesn't have to go out in um and and during those storm events. Um, it does happen, it does occur, but again, we're trying to limit that um going forward. Um, prevent the occurrence of public emergencies resulting from water quality contamination and pollution due to flooding. Um, we certainly don't experience what's happened in the southern part of the country, it is. Um, quite a mess after after large events like that, um and there are definitely public health threats that result from. Large areas of residential um areas being flooded. Um, so again, that's these, these are just all the the reasons, again, many of these come uh from the model ordinance, but also I think. Um, they certainly ring true in terms of what we're trying to do here. Um, the ordinance defines the boundary of where this jurisdiction is, again, it's a combination of. The federal uh FEMA flood maps as well as this future area. Um, and there, so I won't go through the seven pages of the ordinance, again, a lot of it is has been provided to us. There's a number of definitions that are required to be in there to make sure that. Um, professionals that are working with with. Landowners are very aware of what they need to do when they propose construction in these areas. And ultimately, um, the intent is to try to dissuade people from pursuing. Construction in these areas, particularly of residential use. So what's really above and beyond and different in this ordinance, um and we join. Um, several other communities, there's there's more than a dozen communities that restrict their floodplanes. Um, in a way beyond uh the model ordinance, which is really just to make sure that everybody's aware and they follow the building code. Um, in this instance, we're um specifically talking about. New regulation of the highest risk area, which are those VE zones, which I mentioned, think about. Um, the water side of the back shore along um Magnolia on the opposite side of Shore Road. Um, and one of the things, um, I I guess, again, this public process has been um has been gr- great, the feedback that we've received. Um, we've provided um some responses through um revision of the of the proposed ordinance. Um, to really clarify and make it clear um the uses that we're talking about and how they will be potentially regulated. Um, so this first sentence in section five five seven of the floodplain overlay district. Um, is where we're being very clear what we mean about residential uses. Um, and those are anything that spans from an accessory dwelling, a single family, a two-family, or a multi-family or apartment. Um, and that this section is not applying um to mixed uses. And specifically because they're not called out um commercial or industrial uses. One of the questions was raised in the old five five, um the inner harbor was exempt. Um, that prior slide that talks about the mandatory nature. Um, the ordinance has to identify the entire floodplain in the community. Um, which the inner harbor certainly has uh floodplain associated with it. But none of the um proposed regulations above and beyond are applying to um commercial or industrial use. Um, so in the VE zone, you know, very clear, no construction of a residential dwelling. Um, there have been proposals in the past, and that's again how some of this discussion began. Um, with a proposed house on the water side of the back shore. Um, there are certainly jurisdictions that somebody would have to pursue. Uh, but there's nothing that prohibits them from um pursuing those permitting paths. For um construction in those areas. Um, this makes it very clear, um Gloucester will not allow it in the future. Um, and beyond that, um, if there are existing structures within these high-risk areas, they can't be expanded. Again, the intention there is if there are um V-zone structures that are partially in the V-zone and maybe partially out of the flood zone. Um, this would encourage redevelopment to be on higher ground, further away from the coastline. Um, you know, not regulating necessarily um anything that's outside of the floodplain. So any, anything outside of the floodplain just is governed by the lot coverage and other dimensional requirements for the zoning district. Um, the lot is within, but specifically, um, these are our regulations for the actual flood zone itself. Um, the the building inspector, you know, reviewed this as well. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had language that also um had dealt deals with the case of the substantial damage of a structure, or if someone were to elect to raise a structure and make it more uh make it flood-proof, or at least um comply one hundred percent with the floodplain construction standards and elevate. Um, this uh uh section B in the in the V-zone would provide for someone to do that. Um, but again, structures can't be expanded in the V-zone. Outside of it, just governed by um the the regulations for the district. Um, in the A zones, again, thinking along the Yanisquam River or anywhere that there might be a V-zone with an A-zone behind it. Um, the proposal is to um restrict the expansion, not to exceed ten percent of the A-zone on the lot. And I have a couple of graphics uh try to make that a little bit clearer. Um, again, anything outside of the floodplain is fair game in terms of just complying with the um dimensional requirements for the district. It's just the lateral or expansion further into the flood zone of a structure um has now has a proposed limit. Again, that limit is to really have people think literally outside the box, outside, outside of the of the floodplain area and to the higher ground on a on a property. Um, again, having that same uh provision for the example of someone wanting to be proactive and elevate a structure, or if there's a structure that's substantially damaged. Um, again, that that ten percent is still there, but it allows um for someone to pursue that approach to redevelopment of a property. Um, so just to familiarize, um, one of the things that, you know, kind of in this discussion of you know, where are there properties that might be a hundred percent in the V E zone? Um, and and how, again, they would be regulated by this to not be able to pursue um new construction of of a dwelling um or residential use in these areas. Um, so again, thinking, um, looking at the slide along the back shore, these these lots that are highlighted in light blue. Um, a few around the edge of the harbor as well. Um, they would not be permitted um to have new construction on them. There's a few more examples along um the south side of Shore Road and and also along um Magnolia Harbor. Um, again, these areas would be restricted. Many of them are undersized to begin with, or don't have the required frontage length. Um, but again, they're, they're in the full brunt of um, you know, storms, winter storms for sure. Um, so right between the eyes, these are some of those areas um that are particularly uh being proposed to be restricted from residential use. Um, just provide this slide again, just to demonstrate there are other areas in in this in the country. Um, as well as some examples more close to home. Um, these are the types of construction standards that have to be adhered to, um elevating structures on pile, whether whether wood or concrete. Um, and that's permissible under um the floodplain construction standards. Um, the conservation commission has jurisdiction. They have to look at minimizing and ensuring that there's no impact to the resource areas. Which in Gloucester are typically rocky coast and coastal bank. Um, but these are 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 stand standards that can be proposed. Um, so I just wanted to go into a little bit more of an example of the A-zone. Um, this is a um, it is to scale to show you a about a ten thousand square foot lot, so just think like an R-ten district. Um, and uh this structure is about a thousand uh square feet, so it could be a a two thousand square foot home. Um, and in this depiction, there's about three thousand square feet of A-zone on the property. Um, and this existing structure um kind of is is built into that zone by about three hundred square feet. So doing the, doing the math there, they are at the limit of ten percent of the flood zone on the lot being three hundred of the three thousand. Um, any proposal for um redevelopment addition to this structure would have to either be lateral in the green areas or landward in the green area, but they would not be able to um expand laterally or towards um towards the water's edge um in the floodplain. Again, there are benefits and decisions that people would be making. Um, they would have to potentially have additions be um compliant, so there are, there are issues with floor levels. Um, ultimately, if, you know, if this is an older structure that's lower down um in the floodplain, insurance rates are based on how much lower it is than the base flood elevation. Um, so there's a lot of incentive for redevelopment to move landward. And we're kind of belt belting and suspendering that with this proposed ordinance. Um, another example of of a situation where same-sized house, same-sized lot, same amount of floodplain on the property. Um, with only a hundred square feet in the floodplain, there could be the potential expansion either laterally or towards the water of an additional two hundred square feet. Not, not a lot, large amount of space. Again, the the hope and intent would be that someone would pursue all of the areas, you know, further away from the shoreline. That would only be governed by the dimensional requirements um for the district. Um, just coming back to on this, again, highlight that that future risk area. Um, those areas, again, um, in some instances, that the um predictions for future flooding are almost coincident with the FEMA flood maps. In other areas, they expand a little bit um landward. There aren't a great number of properties that get included in that future flood risk area because many of our shorelines kind of go up fairly steeply. Um, so again, a couple of feet of increased elevation doesn't really extend landward that much. Um, but in those areas, um, it would really just be through the building permit process that there would be a checklist provided for them to acknowledge that they've seen the mapping tools that we have. Um, and have them respond to that in some way, which could be, I'm not going to do anything other than what I'm doing. This is, this is what I'd like to propose. Or thank you for that information. We've revised our plans and we and we're going to deal with that potential risk in the following ways. Again. Other than filling out a a form of acknowledgement and providing information, which I think the city is is in in the role to do. Um, there's no uh restriction or additional um development um uh standard that they they would have to adhere to. Um, so again, this, this is just the area that talks about permit requirements. Again, we're, we're, we're talking about that this uh would be anything that's within these areas. Rather than creating a new special permit process, and I was also asked this question. We are setting up a jurisdiction, which is the combination of these two mapping resources. And we've permeated our existing permit permitting si- system that we have for this to be a consideration. So um, if somebody is proposing a single or a two-family, it's allowed as a right. They don't trigger a site plan review. They don't trigger um anything other than potentially the conservation commission if they're in the floodplain. Um, or they could potentially be out of conservation jurisdiction and only in that future flood risk area. These mapping tools capture them in that jurisdiction and they follow through on whatever process they have to. Building permit might be the only thing they have to pursue. And again, that checklist um is provided to them um as as kind of an educational tool. Why did I bring you back to the floodplain map? I'm not sure. I guess maybe I'm getting, I'm getting to closure. Um, I'll skip that and come back to it if we need to, if we need to revisit it. Um, I guess I was showing that, again, what the jurisdiction essentially is, is everything in um the two shades of blue on on this mapping tool, as well as some of those expanded areas in the in the uh two point four foot of sea level rise prediction of the one percent, one percent chan- chance storm. Um, so there is a little bit of overlap. We will try to display these so that they can be seen coincident on one mapping tool. Um, but for right now, we will have these static maps available um to identify um if if folks are in these zones. And again, there's one that shows you the potential depth of flooding and the other that shows you um the percentage chance of that flooding event. Um, so question. Um, I suppose I can stop there, or I can go through a couple of the questions that um came up um through the public hearing of the planning board as well as the standing committee. I think that's an, that's an overview, but I can, I can get into question.
So I, I think we should continue with the um public hearing, Greg, and then get to the questions.
Okay.
Um, at that point in the process.
Okay.
Um, so thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, so would anyone else on the call like to speak in favor of this proposal? Would you um raise your hands? See one, um Marcia Hart. Marcia, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to speak to the council. Um, Joanne, would you mind timing this? And um at two fifty, give us a noise or a symbol. Marcia, you have the floor. Thank you for being.
Can you hear me all right?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Um, this is Marcia Hart. I live at two Fremont Street. Um, I haven't attended the previous meetings, but I have watched all of the recordings of the meetings um from the planning board subcommittee meetings through this one. And I'd like to thank uh Greg and the planning board and the P and D committee for all the really good work that has taken place and the thoughtful process that's been conducted. And there's been a really conscientious response to questions along the way. And that's really helped me to better understand um this process. Uh, I I bought a property in Gloucester um many years ago now and it and fell into the floodplain during the course of my mortgage that I still have. And um I live just on the other side of the Rocky Neck Causeway. And um the two thousand and eighteen storm brought water into the street. The storm just before this last Christmas um flooded some of the buildings across the street from where I live. Um, my property is going to be impacted by climate change. There's no question of it at some point. And I feel very um sorry for anybody who has property right now who's going to be impacted by climate change or has been. All over the world, people are being um impacted by this in flooding and droughts and all sorts of terrible events. And Gloucester's uh most uh pressing need is to prepare for the water that's coming. Um, so I'm really pleased that the city's being proactive on this issue. It's really necessary. Um, it's a real inconvenience to some people. Um, but that's the reality and uh we aren't in control of the rising seas. Um, I've come to believe that climate change is a real issue and a very um a a very emergent issue. And uh the sooner that we accept that and prepare for it, the uh less disruption there's going to be. Um, and I I wouldn't want more places to be built that will cause our emergency workers to have to try and help people who shouldn't be in those locations already. And uh that will take those services away from the rest of the community. And we're going to have a lot of problems in a lot of places, so I hope you'll please keep going on this topic and uh help to make us as resilient as possible. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Marcia. Appreciate it. Now we have Val Nelson. Val, would you um introduce yourself? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us about this matter.
Thank you, Val. So my name is Valerie Nelson. I live at seven Sunset Point Road. Some of you may know I've been spending quite a bit of time in the last few years with the Cape Town Climate Coalition and projects looking at the impacts of extreme storms and sea level rise on our coastlines, infrastructure and buildings, homes and waterfront properties in general. So I'd like to commend the city. I, as Greg said, we're a little bit ahead of the curve. It's coming as state mandates with FEMA requirements, but we definitely are a leading-edge community, and I appreciate that. Um, I echo Marcia's comment that I certainly have raised questions in my own right uh about, say, does this apply to the working waterfront? And I'm thankful that uh Greg has been very responsive, making changes and clarifications. So that's been a very good process. Um. He did not present tonight, I think, some of the reasons for taking these moves that are um mentioned out there. Marcia said the danger to emergency service workers, but we're just down the street. There are properties in the V-zone, and I think one thing that we're missing is that we we put our own uh tax base and uh municipality in some danger, the more that we develop high-value properties in such danger and high-risk zones because the future is telling us that um they're going to suffer damages, insurance from cover in the future. FEMA won't cover it, and uh just as a pure matter of fiscal responsibility, we, it's important for the municipality to rein in um overinvestment of our tax base in such high-risk zones right along the coastline. So again, I commend the city for being on the leading edge. Thank you for all of the cooperative discussions with um community members, and I think this is um to be applauded. It's very much headed in the right direction for protecting our community for what's coming down the road. And um so thank you very much. I very much support this. Um, there's these amendments and proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Anyone else like to speak in favor? I see Adam Faber in um, Madam Clark.
No, they unmuted me. I'm not sure why. I'm waiting for the next topic.
Okay. Um, so I think that's it for people in um support. Is there anyone on the call that's in opposition? Um, I I see Joel Favazza. Um, Joel, would you um introduce yourself and your address? And you have three minutes to talk to us.
Thank you. Good evening. Joel Favazza. I'm attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions at one twenty-three Main Street. I want to start uh by applauding the effort of the city to address this issue. As you know, I've been helping Gloucester residents navigate permitting in town for the past twelve years. Um, so I speak tonight with at least some authority on interpreting zoning language and assessing the impact of that language. And I'm just want to state tonight that if you pass the ordinance as written, you are taking existing house lots that are currently family homes, primary or sole assets for families, or that some people have only recently spent their life savings to acquire. You're taking these lots and under the language as written, you're converting them to potentially unbuildable, likely unimprovable, and shortly as FEMA continues to update their maps, unlivable lots. You're providing also an insurmountable hurdle to escaping these restrictions by way of an extra-stick variance process that requires more than regular zoning variances typically require. So I'm not saying that we need to stick our heads in the sand. I'm not saying we do not need to rethink how we live along the ocean. We certainly do. But I'm urging you to give these property owners a fair chance to salvage what may be their largest investment before you kind of destroy the value of it. When applying the proposed language to existing properties, I can pick at random a map geo. There are certain lots in nearly every ward along Washington Street and Rocky Neck, on Wytham Street, Woodward Avenue, Essex Avenue, that will become pragmatically unbuildable because they're entirely in the floodplain, either V E or A E. There are many more that will remain buildable but highly devalued. These citizens need be given an opportunity to explore their options and, if possible, secure permits under the current regulatory framework. I urge you to please set the implementation date for two years from the enactment. Instead of tolling periods that property owners who permit their renovations or new builds during these two years have another five years to commence construction. Give them a chance to survive not only the rising ocean waters, but this tidal wave that is the new ordinance you're sending their way. So that ends, you also have a number of property owners who right now have already spent tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on attorneys, engineers, sanitarians, architects, and who have received some, but not all, the necessary permits from various state and local boards and commissions to build or rebuild their home. And this ordinance would throw all that work and those plans into the trash and force these property owners to start over, which may itself not be possible. So again, I'm not saying do nothing. I'm saying give these people a chance to survive the change. Please set the implementation date for two years from enactment, instead of tolling periods that property owners would permit their renovations or new builds. who permit their renovations or new builds during those two years have another five to commence construction. Again, I thank you very much for tackling this issue. I hope Gloucester continues to look forward as it is in this matter. And I thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next person with their hand up is CK. Um, CK, would you introduce yourself and your um, address? And you have three minutes to talk to us.
Oh, hi. This is Catherine Ryan, um, 17 High Rock. I there's a couple of things. I'm hoping that you postpone this vote for more discussion. Um, hang on, I have feedback. I I think there are several conflicts of interest that are at play. Um, I think that the um, one of the architects that's doing expansions and you know, um, dealing with issues that are on the coast is the Chair of Conservation. I think it's um, a, a major, major issue here because you said tonight that that's um, with Greg's presentation in the opening, that that's, that's where it goes. Um, I've asked repeatedly for the quantity of expansions and um, enlarged lots and moved lots um, that this is actually applied to. Um, Val described it as, you know, higher, higher-end properties. Um, I'd, I'd like to see really where that, that impact is. Um, because I think that's what we're talking about. And to Joel's point, um, you know, he's, he's on the, on the end of, you know, expansions and special permits and variances. You know, he's one of the, the main people that's up at the ZBA that's getting them. Um, I also do not see what's, what's, you know, what's helping people that are in vulnerable areas um, that maybe aren't trying to build a mansion that you can drive, lift up and drive cars under to go on the coast? Or you know, the fact that you're pushing into frontage as a special permit to get around it? And it ends up being just for an expansion of a house? I don't think that that's just about betterment. And um, I think that there's a greater discussion that's not happening here. So um, yeah, I just, I, I would like to be able to prepare a conversation about this. And I did try to speak at the last meeting. And I think it's interesting, you know, Debbo Lysin was the lawyer that was asked to weigh in on this proposal um, with her expertise. I think that there should be, you know, several, several voices of expertise um, weighing in on this. Um, so yes, I would like to talk about protecting, oh, oh, oh. And then in terms of those, those demos and those buildings that happen with expansions, which you know, I, I've seen now three. Um, you know, they take out these lots and, and then if they've moved the foundation, that, that involves building into the rock that's somehow on the coast. You know, it, it, it needs new, new, new plans, new decisions. I, I just
Val, you have ten, ten seconds.
Okay, it's not taking into account what happens with the demo, for instance, by me that just took out a wire and facilities to make an expansion for a house. So I think the, the discussion of conservation and permits has to happen before. And I think we need to know the context of, of what we're really, you know. I, I mean, this is almost like a, 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 an investment or a seed fund. Uh, uh, this is almost encouraging everybody to be doing building right now. And for
Catherine, in fairness to everybody else, we need to excuse me, Catherine, we need you to wrap up. Thank you.
Okay, so that, that, that's my, my wrap-up is I do not think that this is covering the full discussion. And I hope that you postpone the vote specifically for the questions.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Uh, looks like Cindy Deal. Cindy, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Cindy Deal from 260 Main Street. And I have more questions than rather saying that this is an opposition. For a point of clarification, I would want to know when the effective date would be of these new regulations because of the concerns that people have already brought up. But my request for clarification actually has to do with a lot of the areas that actually haven't been mentioned tonight, which are not a Longshore Road or Rocky Point, which have to do with all of the downtown area. Rogers Street, Main Street, Port Square, um, and continuing on through Western Avenue, which are a lot of residential um, properties that are in there. And I guess one question would be, um, it sounds like, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that the properties that are on Main Street would be exempt because there is a requirement for a commercial um, piece of a property to be on the main floor of any property that's built on Main Street, even though above that can be residential. So I guess I'd want to know if that's true. And when you're talking about residential properties, is that considered all types of residential properties? Because as you may be aware, the Gloucester Housing Authority is interested in building a property on 252, 256 Main Street, which is um, predominantly in the AE zone, which would be all residential. So those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor or in opposition at this point? Seeing none, um, are there any communications or correspondences, Madam Clark?
I just saw a hand go up and then it went down. And it was Lisa Rixby. And I'm not, I'm not seeing it now. Did she want to speak? Or I don't know if she put her hand up by accident.
I do not see her hand up.
Okay.
Nope. So um, at this point, um, Madam Clark, any communications or correspondence? Um,
I'm sorry.
Okay.
There are no communications that were submitted um, as required in the 72 hours prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, councilors, this is our opportunity to ask questions. Um, so let's open the floor. And we have Greg Catamatory here to answer our questions. So it looks like, yes, Council Grow?
Since Greg already has a number of questions and answers attributed to this, go through those first so we're not doubling up on the
That's a great idea because he was going to start with that earlier. So um, Greg, you, you have the floor again and you're back to the questions that we paused you on. Um, so if you could go back to those answers, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Sure. I'll just, I'll just try to also answer others that I uh, just heard that um, might make sense. Um, so these, I mean, these are going to sound a little bit, um, probably maybe not necessarily a linear discussion just because of um, um, they, they were produced from questions that were asked of the PND, but they might help clarify in a couple of ways. Let me just share my screen again. Um, so again, just clarifying, there, there were some questions about um, how these regulations would be applied. I gave those couple of slides, particularly in the AE zone, that again, we're just talking about new limitation of the floodplain area on the lot. Um, and that it couldn't exceed 10% of that area. So there was some confusion as to whether or not it meant only 10% of the lot. There is a lot coverage requirement in most districts that exceeds that. But particularly just in the, in the floodplain area, there would be that new limitation. Um, there was a question about, uh, will future, in future conditions, is it possible that AE zones may become VE zones? Um, FEMA does its map updating. Um, if an area becomes of greater risk, it's possible that that line between a VE zone and AE zone may, may shift where some areas that are just of still a high hazard risk, um, but not as high as the VE zone, um, could be in the future as well as, um, the AE zone could certainly expand in the future based on um, new mapping that, that would be provided by FEMA. Um, there was a question about if these zoning amendments affect insurance rates. Insurance rates rely on that regulatory map that's produced by FEMA alone. Um, so this ordinance itself does not impact that mapping. Again, it's a product of FEMA that ensures that, um, look to, um, to gauge the risk and set flood insurance rates. Um, and there's been discussion at the federal level of how those rates will be assessed. Um, at one point, they were thinking that they should be more uh, based on, on an actuarial, actuarially basis. Um, that's a tough word to say three times. Um, they, uh, but the rates are the rates and they are, they're set based on those maps. So there's nothing in this ordinance that affects um, the maps themselves. Um, there was also a question about how this would affect potentially city-owned property. Um, I suppose that the city owned a um, a VE zone lot on the back shore. Um, it would prohibit us from selling that and having that be proposed for residential use in the future. Um, just related to a couple, and I'll stop sharing, a, a couple of those questions that were asked in terms of the effective date of this proposed ordinance. Um, the effective date would be the first notice of the public hearing of the City Council, um, which Madam Clerk can remind me of the date. I believe it was um, in January um, for this meeting, maybe January 27th. Does that sound right, Joanne?
Yes, it was January 27th and February 3rd.
Um, so the effective date of the ordinance would be that date. Um, that's what's contemplated in state law in chapter 48. Um, the whole point and purpose of it is if you are going to set a regulation that um, is going to be more stringent, it's that public noticing that um, puts any project that hasn't received a special permit or a building permit um, subject to that new regulation. Um, so there, I mean, one of the questions of, that was asked of you is whether or not you consider a future date. Um, I think it, to some degree, um, you pick any hypothetical ordinance. You propose it, you enact it. If you put a, a clause on it that it doesn't start for two years, um, you're going to get activity related to that proposed ordinance for two years. Um, so that's what 48 contemplates. You, if you're enacting an ordinance, it's based on that first public notice um, so that you don't get a flood of proposals um, coming in um, that might be regulated by a future ordinance. Um, again, the uh, to the areas in the downtown area, um, anything that would be strictly 100% residential use um, would be subject to these dimensional standards of, of not being able to expand. Um, in many of those areas in the downtown area, the footprint of the building is already there. Um, so there could be reuse of, of that, of those sites. Um, if there is not, they would be subject to that limitation without any potential pursuit of barriers. Um, so if there is a 100% floodplain lot that is proposing residential use in one of the forms that are identified in the ordinance, they would be subject to that regulation without some other relief.
Um, all right, so we're going to ask more questions. Council Grow?
I wanted it, it just to move
Council Nolan.
If it's okay, um, I had asked, we'd asked Suzanne Egan to weigh in on the question of whether or not projects that were in process but had not yet been fully permitted would be subject to the law uh, as it's, as it's written. And Greg's rate basically already answered that question, but would you like me to read her response in total? It's just a paragraph.
Please.
So the question was whether or not, if you had a project that had yet to go through the, the full process and achieved a special permit or a building permit, would it be subject to the uh, to the new zoning requirement? And could, so her, her answer was, Council Grow, this is in response to your request for clarification as to whether the proposed floodplain zoning ordinance will be applicable, applicable to development projects that are contemplated or pending before non-zoning and zoning permitting authorities. In most cases, the zoning amendment will apply to any change in use or alteration, extension or reconstruction of a structure. However, zoning amendments do not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or begun before the first notice of the public hearing on the proposed amendment. Two, building permits or special permits issued before the first date of notice of the public hearing on the proposed ordinance. And three, limited-duration zoning freezes for endorsed subdivision plans and endorsed A and R approval-not-required plans pursuant to the subdivision control law. However, projects that are pending before permitting boards or commissions will be subject to the floodplain zoning amendment and cannot take advantage of any zoning freezes. Sincerely, Suzanne Egan. I sent that to you all this afternoon when I received it.
Thank you. Um, questions? I think um, Council Nolan had his hand up. Council
I do have a question for Greg. So it sounds like to me that with the, the new building proposed um, on Main Street for the housing through the Gloucester Housing Authority, they haven't applied for anything yet. Would that stop that development for that needed housing?
So um, their pursuit will likely be a 40B application. Um, they would have to request a waiver from that, from this enacted provision if it is enacted. Um, 10% of the lot, it's, it's 100% in the floodplain. Um, I don't know exactly what the footprint of the building is, but I'm assuming it's probably greater than that. Um, through the 40B process, they can ask for that relief. And that's for the zoning board to weigh um, the proposed use and what they can do in terms of protecting future residents. They would, they would have to address that concern um, and, and overcome that standard.
Okay, so basically that's pretty much a no. Um, and there's no way that the Gloucester Housing Authority is going to build something with commercial units in the first floor and then residential above it, which sounds like that would change that purpose.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that's a no. They, through the comprehensive permit process, they will have to justify and address why they would want to waive from the standard if it's enacted. So it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to the, the zoning board of appeals um, to waive that standard.
And that'd be the zoning board of appeals in Gloucester can still waive the rights?
Yes. They, they can waive that standard through the 40B process.
Excellent. Thank you, Greg.
Council member.
Just following, following up specifically on Sean's recent question and Greg's response. Uh, it, it's not fixed. As I said, they haven't made a formal proposal, but that specific site, as I understood it, uh, would typically use the first, the ground floor for parking only. And then access to the second and third residential units. I don't know how that would factor in uh, to this kind of a plan.
Well, certainly because it's in the floodplain, they will have to adhere to a standard of um, where there can be available space. Um, so they'll, they're, they're subject to the, to the floodplain construction standards right now. It's this dimensional standard that is new um, that they would have to address through, through their comprehensive permit. I don't want to get too much into a specific about a project that hasn't been proposed, but um, you know, I, I guess that's the way you would address it with any property that's 100% in the floodplain. Um, if they're, if they're not, um, if there isn't currently a use on the property, um, they'd have to seek relief. And that's the whole purpose and intent of trying to limit additional residential expansion into the floodplain.
What questions, councilors? Council Worthley? You are muted, Councilor.
Thank you. I'm not a climate change denier. I think that the tide, the ocean level is rising, so there's no debate there. Um, I would have expected more people to be part of this public hearing. I just want to ask a procedural question. Did we notify every property owner that's on that very expensive map? And/or did we waive that requirement? Because I don't recall that vote. We may have.
Um, Madam Clerk?
I, I have to go back to my agendas, but I believe we had to waive um, the requirement to waive notice to the abutters. And um, I believe we proposed that earlier because it would affect the whole city.
I'm not questioning that we need to do it. I just don't recall that we did it. I'd like to have that information before we close public hearing. Because if we didn't, then we need to decide if we're need to advertise this differently or invite people. I just, I'm a little surprised with this number of properties being impacted, that there wouldn't be more people either in favor or against this participating in the hearing. Um, so that's, I guess, a procedural question I'd like to ask.
Okay, I, I would have to search it. I'm going to search it on my phone on the past um, minutes. Okay, so if you, you can continue and I can come back with that. But I am pretty sure we've waived the list of it, um, to the abutters.
I agree with Madam Clerk, but I think it would be helpful for her just to get that information. We, we did, we did waive that, um, that it was impracticable. But I do think I'd like to, um, I'd like Madam Clerk to um, to, to verify that. Um, more questions, councilors? Um, Council O'Neil? Counsel O'Neil and then Counsel Gross.
This is for Greg, thank you Greg. This is mandated by whom? By what agency?
So in order to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The next time our maps are updated. As I indicated, most of the language of the proposed ordinance, other than. Some of the nuances in the jurisdiction, because not every community is required. To look at future flooding. Again, those areas are would be advisory, so that's something that's different from the from the state model. As well as the standards that are in section five five seven. Which are dealing with with the potential restriction and the potential limitation in the V zone and the AD zones. Those provisions are not provided by the state. There are other communities that have done similar things in regulating their floodplanes, there are some that don't don't allow any new. Residential use in the floodplain period. This doesn't go quite that far. But those those portions are would be Gloucester specific. The majority of the ordinance was a combination through the Office of the State Floodplane Management. And interaction with FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program of what the content of the ordinance needs to require.
So was this is this is mandated by the Office of State Floodplane Management and FEMA?
So it is, it is essentially to be a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program. We are required to have this ordinance.
Okay. Can we share the floor, Council O'Neil, we'll come back to you, Counsel Gross? Oh, go ahead, Madam Clerk, you have the answer, go ahead.
Yes, I do, on November twenty second. When this, the amendments appeared on that, on the that agenda. The council voted nine in favor, zero opposed to waive notice. To the butters on the Gloucester section one eleven four B regarding. Okay, I'm sorry, it's. That was the council order. I'm sorry, that is the wrong one, let me go back to it, we had zoning, I'm sorry.
Have it for you. December thirteenth. On the motion of Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Worthley. The city council voted by roll call vote, nine in favor, zero opposed to waive to notice of the butters under GZO section one point one eleven four. Regarding setting the date for the February fourteenth public hearing. And to refer to the matter to planning and development and planning board, planning development committee, so. It was moved and seconded and voted unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, questions, Counsel Gross? You are muted.
Greg, you. You put up a couple of satellite. Pictures. And they have VE zones. Are. And they were very limited compared to the FEMA map.
Yes, I was I was showing lots that were one hundred percent in the VE zone. So it wasn't showing the entire, yeah, it wasn't showing the entire floodplain, it was just. Particular lots that were one hundred percent in the VE zone. Again, some of them were undersized, they were, but they're generally. On the water side of Shore Road, the water side of the back shore.
And the VE zone goes all the way to the front of the lot, so, yeah. Okay, alright, yeah, that, yeah, that makes sense, because this is. Okay, alright, thanks. That's it.
Thank you, who hasn't asked a question at this point, so we can share the floor, Counsel here.
I I just heard what Counsel Grow. Read about waiving the notice. And and it's very clear, we voted nine in favor, zero opposed. But as Counsel Worthley mentioned, that this, this is, this. If if we do vote in favor, this is this is gonna have dramatic impact, people will be waking up.
Can we hold on that, because you're starting to deliberate? We're we're at the questions and I prefer to hold on that, because that's. That's you're you're starting to discuss how you feel about this, so let's stick to the public hearing protocol, if, thank you. Who else hasn't spoken in terms of questions? I have a question. Greg, I have a question about the flood insurance, if. If you. If you're gonna buy a. Oceanfront. Velocity, high velocity floodplain house, and you're gonna buy it outright in cash. Does that exempt you from needing flood insurance, or do you still have to get flood insurance?
Well, insurance is something that's required by lenders. If you are paying cash, you don't have to elect to have a flood insurance policy. You then also can't make a claim. But, yeah, so if it is, it is something that is required in the lending industry. So if you're gonna have a mortgage on a property and you're in a flood zone, they're gonna require you to secure that. So that their investment is protected by the potential for a flood insurance claim.
Okay, thank you, and could you, I have one. Counsel Nolan hasn't asked a question, so I'm gonna hold on my second question until you ask your first question. You have the floor, Counsel Nolan.
This is a question for Greg. Greg, how much time do we have? Before FEMA moves the law into place? We're being ahead of the curve with future flood risks, which you had mentioned. But when does this actually deadline to have a decision from the council, thank you.
So again, we're in a space right now where we're entertaining this and we're not mandated to do it right now. It's at the point where they reach out to communities and. They are gonna provide a new mapping product, so the last time we had our maps updated was twenty sixteen. They continually kind of go through a rotation of reevaluating. Oftentimes, they focus on areas that may be harder hit. With more recent events, make sure that they're getting it right in terms of of what that risk is. And also assess assessing premiums, if there's a community that's. You know, having multiple, multiple claims year after year, and this is a program that's funded nationally. They want to make sure that areas of the highest risk are also paying a premium that's reflective of of the risk that they're in. So we haven't gotten the, we would typically get a preliminary mapping for us to. Respond to, review, you know, if we have any local knowledge that seems like there's an inconsistency. That usually runs a six month period. And then they start to to release the the mapping product of the community. And then you have a window of time, usually like a, I think it's a ninety or a sixty day, I'm sorry, a ninety or a hundred and eighty day. To enact an ordinance that complies. So we are ahead of all that. In in this consideration, but. The the language that I've indicated in in section five five. Most of it is from the state model that they provided to other communities. That have received that map update, they need to adopt this 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 ordinance. And they've done so, so we are, we are not in a window right now of having to do that. We are bringing this forward because of the context that I introduced in the beginning of the presentation. That it's been talked about for, you know, pretty seriously, I think during. The discussions around the backshore proposal. Wanted to try to remember the date of that, but it's certainly certainly at least five, five to seven years back. And that being reiterated through these different planning processes over the last five years. The time seemed like it was appropriate to bring this forward. Recent events have only, you know, clarified that they that these areas are are of high risk. And it's a decision point of of how the communities develop moving forward from this point. So there's no, other than. You're in the public hearing process, you come to closure on it and make a decision. That's that's for the now, but there's nothing currently that we're being required to enact. To be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program.
Thank you, before we continue with questions, I'd like to just. Ask if we can suspend the rules of procedure and. We have two members of the public that have put their hands up. And. Without objection, I guess, you know, I would like to allow them to. To speak for up to three minutes, I just don't feel right with them having hands up and for us to. To be continuing, so without objection, councilors? Does anybody have an objection, tell me the truth, because we can vote that, okay. So without objection, I'm gonna ask Holly Dog Willow, you you had your hand up first. And then you have up to three minutes to speak to us. In either favor or opposition. But we're going backwards in the public hearing to accommodate your hand, go ahead. Introduce yourself in your address, and Joanne, if you don't mind keeping track of the time, that would be great. You are muted, Holly. Would you unmute yourself?
She may have inadvertently put her hand up.
Okay, so I don't think Holly star nine. Okay, so the other person that has a hand up is. Gully Hand, Gully, if you introduce yourself in your dress, you have up to three minutes to talk to the council and. Madam Clerk, if you would, if you wouldn't mind taking care of that. And it looks like. Counsel Majorta is going to sign off right now, so he's not feeling well, so thank you, Counselor.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear, Gully, your name and address, and you have three minutes to talk to us. We're going backwards in our public hearing, go ahead.
Thank you, I I realized, I, you know, I, it took me a while to digest all this, and then I just realized. After listening, that my property is very heavily affected by this. Vote, and I'm gonna tell you why, but I also. Got thinking, and you know, you're talking about flood insurance, that's an option that people have, and most people who are wealthy, you buy on the shore. Don't need it, you know, so, so I don't know what the rush is to to get something through that affects. Flood insurance for the majority of those people, I realize there, it is good to restrict things along the shore, but let me explain. I live on at thirty six Rocky Neck Avenue, I'm on the nonwater side of Rocky Neck. Across the street from me is the Gettymann Gallery, which is three stories tall. I live in a two story little cape that's that's actually at the back of my property, that's above. The flood, it's not in the flood zone, I have a little building that was in the flood zone and that I. I that when I had a had a mortgage on it, I paid flood insurance, but I don't anymore. But I just realized that if if I, if anyone were to. If I were to sell my property, or if somebody wanted to build a a house that they could on my very large lot. They would be limited to the ten percent of the part of the that's in the flood zone, which is most of my property. Which where I'm across the street from the water, and there's a three giant three story building that's on the water. And I would be limited to a very small addition. So I would be very serious, my property value would be very seriously affected by this. And I just, I only just realized this, I I've been on the call all night and I didn't speak against it. But it was only, it took me a while to figure this out, and so I I think. You know, that this is not something that I would vote for for those reasons, I think it's unfair and. And it's totally, because they could put a house there and park underneath it and have a giant house. And be no higher than anything else in the neighborhood, and yet I couldn't do it, I'd be limited to my tiny little house. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gully. Okay, so we're back to questions, and Counsel O'Neil had her quite, her hand up. For a second question before I did, so you have the floor, Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you. Sorry. And two questions, I think, and the. The lowlands requirement, I've asked this of you before, Greg, right? The lowlands requirement. That. Stated, commercial uses are exempt. I see in the new, the new five five seven, that mixed uses are exempt. Would we? Be, would it be? If we put commercial, if we exempted commercial uses, would that kick us out of the? Floodplain. National Flood Insurance Program? If we, if we. Added. Commercial uses are exempt, would that kick us out of the National Flood Insurance Program?
I I have to think exactly, what I tried to do in that clarification is very specifically. Use the definitions that we have in the zoning ordinance to define the standards that are being applied, we have a definition. In the zoning ordinance for an accessory dwelling unit. A single family, a two family, and multifamily. Commercial and industrial are things that are referenced in use tables. Not necessarily by a definition per se, so I tried to keep it strict to what those standards do apply to. You know, in particular, the Marine Industrial District doesn't permit residential use. And we're only talking about residential use, if there does exist. You know, if if there's existing nonconforming, it kind of falls into to a whole different category. So it's 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 a little bit challenging to just kind of add additional things to that definition. This area of the ordinance is something that's very specific and not. A requirement of the National Flood Insurance Program, so to answer your question, do we have some liberty in this area, yes, we do. I reviewed, you know, that that kind of preamble in section five five seven with the solicitor. And that's what we came up with, because it specifically identifies what those standards do apply to. For anything in the inner harbor. It has to apply with FEMA floodplain construction standards, and there's a variety of ways to comply with that. But these sections in five five seven do not apply.
Go ahead, you can ask a follow up question, and then and then we will share the floor, thank you.
Thank you. So would. Could one make an argument? To add commercial uses into? The. Where is, where are, where are, where is the commu- commercial uses are in the table section, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a variety of.
Could we add it with? Could we add a definition of commercial uses? Where there is no definition of commercial uses, so that we can put commercial uses into this. Five five seven. Does that make sense?
I I understand what you're saying, we did not notice that we were gonna change section six in the zoning ordinance, so if we were gonna start. Adding things to that, we would have to start a new process associated with that. You know, specifically, if the council wants to. Amend the ordinance in that particular section to. Like, you know, I think it's pretty clear, but if there's there's a desire to try to. Expand on that area of of exemptions. It it could be done within the ordinance, it would just, I'd have to think about how how we would actually do that. Because I want to be, I want, always want to be clear, and that was actually one of the reasons why it was revised. Was if you start introducing new terms, you want to make sure that they're defined somewhere, so we drew from. The existing ordinance to kind of clarify that. And by saying exactly what it does apply to. You know, it's it's trying to make the case that you don't have to list everything when you're just saying it's only gonna apply to these particular uses.
Right, it's just confusing to me why it would be allowed for mixed uses and not commercial uses, I don't. I don't, I don't, can you explain why that is?
Well, it's, you might, so mixed use might be a residential use and a commercial use.
I know what, I know what it is. I just don't understand why mixed use would be allowed and commercial would not be. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, commercial, commercial is not being, these these standards aren't applying to commercial or industrial. It's just that sometimes residential is in a mixed use project with commercial. And we have a definition for that, and we wanted to be clear about in those instances. Those prohibitions would not apply.
Right, but you said this does not apply to commercial and industrial. Right, but you said this does not apply to commercial and industrial. I don't know why it doesn't. It doesn't make sense to me. If mixed use is exempt, why is not commercial, industrial exempt as well?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, 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 I, I can understand what, what you're saying, because the words aren't actually on the page, but instead of saying what it doesn't apply to, it's saying what it does apply to, and we also have the instance where sometimes there is um, residential mu- use with a commercial use and a mixed use, and we're not saying that that would apply in this particular case.
Right, but by omitting it.
Council, we, we need to share the floor. Can we, can we share the floor? I'm sorry, I know you're frustrated, but um, we, we need, we need to share the floor, and I haven't asked my second question, and you've been, you've had the floor for about ten minutes, so. Um, so I'd like to ask my questions, and then I think Council Nolan has um, his hand up. So um, Greg, my question is, can you tell us how many municipalities have implemented this new state requirement? And um, and also what has been happening with um, any litigation that is occurring with those municipalities?
Well, there's a couple, couple of things there. So just enacting um, the base model ordinance that complies with the National Flood Insurance Program standard of, of what you have to have in place. Um, I don't know the number, but I don't know a community that's refused to do it. That we haven't received the map updating yet, but there have been a number of communities and um, you know, the coordination of ensuring that people are aware and taking those steps is the, the Massachusetts Office of Floodplain Management. So they've done a sweep when there's a new mapping product that comes out. Um, generally, they do them by county. It's one of the few things that still kind of remain um, in the county form. Um, so a county will be remapped. All those communities receive their maps, and that coordination is happening through um, the arm of the State Office of Floodplain Management to ensure to let those communities know that you need to do this in order to remain in good standing. Um, so there's probably been dozens that have done that, that have had um, their mapping updated in um, the last, you know, probably three years or so. In particular, if there are standards above and beyond, um, you know, there, there has been case law, yeah, in communities that have prohibited construction that's been upheld. Um, and there's also, um, you know, the ability uh, to put an additional dimensional requirement is, is certainly acceptable. I mean, we could change side yard setbacks, we can change um, lot coverage, there's, there's a number of dimensional requirements. Um, and there's no, the, the, the community has the ability to make those changes. We've just chosen, you know, another, another type of mapping product to apply a standard to. So I, I don't see any issue um, with the, the two things that have been proposed. They've been, they've been tested in other communities.
Okay, and Cohasset was one, is that correct? Was, is that one of the um, the?
Uh, I think, I think one of the cases that's probably most um, related to um, limitations and prohibitions at Chatham. But there, but there are, there are a number of communities, there's probably, I think there um, again, and some some don't allow new residential development in the entire floodplain. They just basically say, that's it, you can't do it. So we, we've, we've kind of gauged this based on the highest risk and, and what, you know, the potential future uh, prohibition, and then starting to put limitations in areas that are still of special hazard, special flood hazard, um, but not as extreme as um, those areas that are um, feeling the full brunt of the Atlantic or, or the potential for um, nor'easters on uh, North Gloucester.
Okay, um, who else has not asked a question? Council Nolan. The floor is yours.
Excellent, uh, this is for Greg as well, and I wanted to bring it up again, but that lot on Main Street um, for the Gloucester Housing Authority, I, I was reading again that it doesn't apply to municipal property. Would that be considered municipal property, that it's owned by the city and it's going to be turned to housing? Does that change anything on that?
Um, I don't think it's, I think it's owned by the Housing Authority, which is quasi, it's not city property per se. Um, but again, I think it's um, the, the route of permitting that they will be pursuing is, you know, they will, they will be addressing waivers with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, this is a new dimensional standard, um, and they could, they could pursue that waiver request.
Right, and would that work for other people? They can, they can apply for waivers.
So for, for. Yeah, for a dimensional requirement, um, that is something that still can potentially be varied by, by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, you know, the, the, the hope and intent is when you enact a new ordinance, um, you mean it, and those should be rare cases where somebody has to demonstrate um, some particular hardship as to why um, that particular standard, um, you know, is a challenge for them. Um, based on the shape and topography of the lot. I mean, there's, there's very strict standards that the Board of Appeal, Board of Appeals is supposed to apply in those cases. It's something that's enacted, um, but there, there is the, the ability, hopefully in very rare cases where someone uh, could pursue a bearing.
Excellent, thank you. I'll be listening for further questions.
Um, Council Gross. And then Council Worthley. Questions?
Yes, Greg. So on properties that the person goes through the appeal with FEMA to um, adjust, you know, that they disagree with the FEMA line, there is an appeal process, they carve out their section and move the line back. Would that just automatically change where the location on that property would be in this ordinance? That this?
So, so there's a couple avenues if somebody pr- pursues a uh, a Loma or a, a letter of map amendment, um, and they do move the jurisdictional boundary of the FEMA flood mapping and remove themselves from it. Um, this ordinance wouldn't apply most likely in the standards of those five-five-seven standards. Um, they may be in um, the future flood risk area, in which case they would only have to um, follow that kind of guideline process in the building permit process. But if somebody removes themselves from, from the uh, that is the jurisdiction that this ordinance is pointing to, um, and it's, and its latest release, which includes map amendments. So if somebody did remove themselves from it, they wouldn't have to comply with those standards.
Correct, and, and um, Council Nolan just said something that kind of caught me a little bit by surprise. In municipality, yes, to abide by all zoning as well as anybody else, correct? We're not exempt, the municipality isn't exempt on any zoning, is it?
Um, I don't know that we'd be exempt from these standards.
No, I wouldn't think that that's even legal, but, and you know, that lot is about forty percent in the AE zone, so. Okay.
Thank you. Um, questions, Council Worthley, you have, have a question?
Yes, um, to Council Gross's question, I think I just read that municipal property is exempt in this ordinance. And I agree, I don't think that we're typically exempt, I think this ordinance calls for that. So, couple of questions. Hang on, I had it right here. This ordinance delegates the responsibility to the conservation administrator, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, there's a couple of pieces of that. As it relates to the, the applying of the zoning, it is certainly um, the zoning official in the community um, that, you know, somebody comes in for a building permit, these things apply, they are the ones that um, you know, continue to indicate to an applicant, you have to comply with this, this, and this. Um, the, the reason for the designation of the floodplain administrator, um, it's always been the conservation agent in Gloucester. Um, that is where the maps are held. Um, the FEMA flood map, uh, the, sorry, the FEMA flood zones are also, under the Wetlands Protection Act, they are a resource area, so anything that's being proposed in these areas goes to the Conservation Commission, so there's, it's really kind of a, um, kind of a consolidated person that has a, you know, strong understanding of the floodplain, where it is in the community as, as uh, assisting in um, the review of those permits as they go forward.
Okay, I don't want to get into the weeds in this, but um, that's a title that we don't have, conservation administrator. It's just the language. It's either conservation agent or conservation commission, but we don't have an administrator, it's officially, do we?
Yeah, I mean, I think the term that we've typically used is agent. Um, in many communities, it's also administrator, for clarity, it could be, it could be changed to um, agent. And that's, that's the person that's had that role as, um, you know, the conservation agent, you know, carries the title of floodplain manager as well. Um, it's, it's not quite entitled. Um, you know, it, it's understood, at least from, you know, tho- the, those that are reviewing the ordinance, administrator, agent, not really a big difference to them, but, or Gloucester, the title um, is held by um, the conservation agent.
Where's the Gloucester code of zoning change here? Would we want it to be reflective of the position? I just wouldn't hate to have someone say, well, you're not the administrator, what authority do you have? It's just,
Yep.
I don't, it's just a small, it's the first thing I saw when I saw this. What do you make of the FEMA redoing all their maps since this? I noticed it means that they had a, a wrong wave model. Are you aware of that?
So they, they use, I mean, in any community, um, they, they clearly don't map the entire shoreline. Um, they do it on a transect basis. Um, they uh, you know, have a defensible model that they use. Um, there are other models that can be applied, um, and there's been some instances with more specific um, local topography, as well as other accepted models that can be used, um, where there's been um, some places where it's been reduced. Again, new information is, is fed into these models, new storm events, um, continually. Um, what that future mapping product looks like, um, when we receive it in the next couple of years, um, could be more coincident with what's on, you know, map now, or there's the potential for it to be modified again.
Okay, we need to share the floor, councillor. Um, I'm going to go back to Council O'Neill, because um, I cut her off and um, in, in it's her turn. Go ahead, Council O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I'm sorry to beat this dead horse, but by omitting commercial, industrial out of five-five-seven, we're leaving room for ambiguity, right? I mean, because you're specifically saying it relates to this, 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 and that. And by omitting commercial or industrial, it's like, well, we didn't say it, we did not say it. It's ambiguous. So that's, that's my, that's my, that's what I'm getting at. You know, I, I'd like it to be either it's allowed in commercial or indus- in industrial, or it's not allowed in commercial, industrial. I, I, I would like to see that in writing, either way. Okay, so that's that, um. So I, I do have a question, it's, if I have a piece of property in the VE zone or the AE zone, and I have um, um, a, a pier for my boat that goes into the VE zone, and it gets destroyed, what happens? I cannot rebuild that, is that correct?
No, um, again, what we're saying when we, the, in the beginning of that section, it says residential use, development, and construction means the following. Accessory dwelling, single-family, two-family, multifamily. Does not identify tiers or, or other structures like that. Um, it's specifically about those residential uses. Um, we know that if somebody's trying to have boat access, they're going to be in one of those zones to get to the water, whether it's an AE or a VE zone, most likely AE, um, because not too many people want to have their boats um, in an area that's, has high wave energy. Um, there probably are some examples of it, um, but those, again, I we, we can kind of agree to disagree. I look at it as we very specifically are saying, here's a section of the ordinance that refers to limitations on residential um, construction and development. And before it, we say, this is exactly what we mean by when we use the terms residential development and construction. It means this, and this, and this. And there's the one example where this, the potential for mixed use, where we're saying, but it doesn't apply to this. So we're not even talking about commercial and industrial uses, because the paragraphs that can be fo- be, be, after it are very clearly saying we're only talking about residential construction or residential development. So um, and those other, those other uses, again, a, a pier, a dock, um, aren't considered, because, because those specific uses that are defined later on in the zoning ordinance in section six are, are very clear as to what we mean by when we say those terms.
Okay, councilors, we need to um, we, we need to start making some decisions here, um. Um, we, we, okay, Council Worthley, you have another question. Go ahead.
My third question, yep, sorry. So when I look at section five-point-five-dash-seven use regulations, the following shall be prohibited in VE zones, and it lists a couple of things, and it says a repair of a substantially damaged structure. Help me understand this, because there's other words around this that might change that, but repair a substantially damaged structure is not allowed in the zone?
Let me just call that language up.
Sure.
Muted rookie move. Let me just uh, share my screen so I can put the language back up for everybody to see it. So the way this is divided up, um, new residential construction, that's what's prohibited. And then it says a different, a different category, movement, alteration, or expansion of an existing dwelling or structure, repair of a substantially damaged structure, or construction of existing structure so as to increase the lot coverage in the VE zone. So that's basically saying any structure that exists in the VE zone can be, if it's damaged, or, or someone is looking to rebuild, they may do so, but they can't increase um, the lot coverage in the VE zone on the lot.
So the part of the sentence, the, the preposition phrase, so as to increase its lot coverage applies to the other pieces of that sentence?
To everything before in that sentence, correct?
Okay, I was reading it differently, okay. Alright.
And I, I will, I will, uh, you know, no shame in, in this is language that is in another ordinance of uh, similar communities, similar environments, um, that's been tested. They've used that um, specific provision to make sure. Um, because from, from the perspective of the codes, if you remove a structure, you are then typically referred to as new construction. So we wanted to make it clear that um, there certainly are going to be examples of a substantially damaged structure, or when someone elects to fully comply with the, with the floodplain construction standards in these areas, they can rebuild on the same footprint, essentially.
Okay, I read it, when I first read it, I thought it was that was separate to the, just the last piece, and, and repair was not allowed in the VE zone.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Okay, can we, um, thank you, Greg. Um, okay, so.
Just got one more question.
Okay, Council Nolan, and then Council O'Neill. Go ahead, Council Nolan.
Uh, this is going to be for Greg again.
Is there anyone else, is there anyone else that there's a question for?
No, there isn't.
So in, in your slide presentation, it did say, in your slide presentation, it did say that municipal land is, is not included in this. Um, I don't know if you could pull that back up from your presentation. Um, because I, I did see it, and I, I feel a little, little off on that.
Is, is that because we don't build residential properties?
Well, I think it, maybe we, maybe we do, maybe we do a, a, a housing that may come across a piece of, of city property. So I mean, it, it, I, I believe it said it, so if, if we could pull that back up, I'd feel better about that.
So where, where are you thinking that you saw this? So where, where are you thinking that you saw this? I'm, I'm, I'm stumped.
Let's look at your slides.
Sorry, I was muted. In one of your, in one of your beginning slide in the presentation, I, I believe I saw that there.
I can, I can it up. You tell me where you thought you saw it.
Uh, I'm trying.
Otis.
Stop here. No, that's it. How come we can go so fast now?
Yeah.
So I don't, I, I'm not sure. Oh, why don't you guys discuss and I'll go back and just double check and do a quick, quick search.
If you could, I'd appreciate.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Counsel Harry, you haven't had any questions. Um, do you have any, any questions to ask um, Greg?
No.
Okay, anybody else that has not um, had the floor for questions? Okay, let's, let's pause for a second and let's um, go ahead, Counsel O'Neill.
This is for Greg, so I don't know if he can.
Multitask?
I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking. How would all of this pertain to the Magnolia Pier?
It's not a residential use.
Okay, so.
So, so whatever standard is being applied from a construction standpoint and the existing code that remains. So it, it does not apply.
Counselors, I'm, I'm prepared to um, close the public hearing. But I just wanna make sure that um, without objection, that um, that, that you're comfortable with that at this point. And then we can decide what the next step is. Is that um, so um.
On that.
Counsel Worthy, go ahead, a question.
I wonder if we were to eventually vote to continue, because I think this is an important change. If we close the public hearing, then any questions we develop between now and the next meeting, we wouldn't have a chance to. We would just be at discussion point. And so I wonder if it makes sense, if we could continue not to delay just for delays purpose, but I think this is something that's, it's heavy and there's a lot to it. And I, I'll say I've been paying a lot of attention. I've seen your presentation a couple of times, Greg, and I haven't, I don't feel prepared. And I don't mean this disrespect, but I just don't know this ordinance as well as anybody else does here. And I'd like to ask a few more questions and I don't wanna be. I mean, if everyone feels like they know this ordinance really well and feel comfortable with it, then I don't wanna be a cog in the wheel. But if we get to what we're gonna continue, I'd rather do it before we close the hearing.
Madam President?
Go ahead, Counsel Grow.
Given, given it's ten fifteen, we have another public hearing. Uh, I would, I would be amenable to continuing the public hearing to the next meeting. It would also allow us to have a full complement of counselors at that meeting, hopefully. And uh, would maybe serve uh, the interest of getting the next public hearing moving forward.
Um, is there a motion um, to second Counsel Grow's recommendation?
I'll move to second.
Who said that? I don't know. I didn't, I didn't hear who said the second. Counsel Nolan, okay. Counsel Grow um, has requested that we continue it to the next meeting. Um, and um, Counsel Nolan had seconded. Is there a discussion?
Um.
Go ahead.
When you make a motion, I think with zoning, you have to put like next meeting, people won't know what the next meeting is. You have to put a date specific. So the next city council meeting would be March fourteenth.
March fourteenth, wow, okay.
Wait, 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 wait.
February twenty eighth, February twenty eighth.
There you go.
Yes.
I, I, I moved that we continue this public hearing until February twenty eighth.
Second.
Uh, I think, okay, I'll, I'll give it to Counsel O'Neill this time because we, we changed it. So sorry, Counsel Nolan. Um, so is there um, any um, further discussion on that?
No, I just hope this allows some time for clarification and questions that, that concern people. We can get those answered and, and finish the discussion.
Okay, and um, and Counsel Gross, you have your hand raised on the, on the motion?
Just, just a process question. Do we, um, people have already spoken, they've already spoken, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think, I think we start off in council questions again, right? That's where we should start off. So. Um, does everybody agree with that? Let's, let's all be clear.
To be clear on Tony's question, uh, that means that if there's publicity and press and uh, internet talk about this topic, this brings it to people's attention in a way that hadn't been previously. We're not gonna be receiving additional written or oral input.
Well, I don't, I don't, I think anybody can send messages to us at any point, Counselor. Right? And, and I think um, if we're gonna continue questions of question, if we have, if we have questions that come out of it, we can continue there. Right? So we just, but the formality of getting the letters and counting it seventy-two hours in advance of the date will, will not be there. But if people send us letters and we can al- also look at them, they're just not part of the official public hearing.
I, I agree. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Grow on the, on the motion.
Yeah, I did, well, just to, to bolster the point here, that if, if somebody in the public would like to have a question as asked, there's nothing wrong with asking one of your counselors to ask it. So.
Exactly. Good point. Yep, absolutely. Okay, so um, we know what the motion is. It's to continue the public hearing until February twenty eighth. We have a second from Counsel O'Neill. Counsel Grow made the motion. Um, let's do a roll call vote. Um, Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Definitely, yes, thank you.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota. Oh, I'm sorry, absent. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Um, eight in favor, one absent. Um, so thank you all. And Greg, thank you so much for your patience and for sacrificing Valentine's Day to be with your favorite city counselors. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I wanna apologize for the um, incorrect date. That was wishful thinking on my part. So the next public hearing is Public Hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five. Special City Council Permit twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, Main Street number one oh eight, map seven, lot fifty-one. Gloucester zoning ordinance sections one point ten miscellaneous special permits. Three point one point six B built-in heights in excess of thirty-five feet. And three point two point six footnote A dimensional requirements for hotels, motels and motor ends and your accessory uses parentheses other than signs. Minimum lot area per two guest unit square feet to convert second and third floors to a hotel with approximately twelve floors in the lobby. Excuse me.
And before I open the public hearing, I just want to um, disclose um, that I've filled out a Gloucester Code of, uh, sorry, Mass. General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-three B, Section three. Um, my stepsister-in-law is a current owner of the property, but she intends to sell this property to the applicant. And um, I just wanted to be clear that um, as an elected official, I have no financial gain or benefit if this special council permit transaction is approved or not. And um, if anybody wants to see my disclosure, they can certainly ask the city clerk's office. So I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask.
The world, Counsel Gilman?
Go ahead, Counsel O'Hara, yep.
Yes, um, not to question what you just stated. Um, has that been reviewed by the State Ethics Commission?
It's, it's a disclosure that I make to the city clerk's office by the law. It's on form. Um.
I, I understand.
Um, so. It, it has not been reviewed. Um.
You just have.
Not reviewed. It's um, it's basically for a commission or elected municipal employee filed with a city clerk or the town clerk, which I have done. And I'm telling everybody that they can read it. And um, you know, if you feel a need for me to read through what this says, I'm happy to do that.
No, no, I, I understand what, what you just wrote.
Okay.
It's just that there's there's a close relationship.
Okay, do you want, should, do I need to cover this, Counselors? Um, Counsel Grow?
I, I think that you've made the disclosure, you've made the filing with the, with the, with the clerk and, and through that to the state. If anyone has a, a, an objection to your vote at the end of this, however, which way it goes, they can file a complaint. But you've done your duty as a city counselor to declare a potential or any appearance of a conflict. I don't see a problem with you moving forward. And if, and if someone has a problem with it after the fact, they can file a complaint with the state and, and, and they can investigate it.
Counsel O'Neill.
Wouldn't, would it be too much to ask you to recuse yourself because you are related?
No, I'm not. I'm not gonna recuse myself because I've filed this. Um, it's, it's a stepsister-in-law. Um, have not talked to her about this.
Um, I'm sure she'd be flattered to think that she had that influence over you.
Yeah, haven't, haven't seen her since the sidewalk bazaar. You can check my public records and um, and I feel perfectly comfortable that this doesn't have any financial gain to me as an elected official in terms of how this evolves. So I'm very comfortable with my disclosure. And I want it to be purposeful, let everybody know this, so that there would be no questions asked. Not my blood, you know, she, she's just my stepsister-in-law because her husband was my stepbrother. And I don't think that this is a big deal. And I, and I just wanna disclose it in fairness to all of you that there is no financial gain for me as Val Gilman, as an elected official on this. And that's what the state asks us to do through our city clerk. So I'm ready to um, to move on and to open the public hearing. And um, and, and welcome Deb Ellison, who is going to tell us about this project, the special council permit. Thank you, Attorney Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, sixty-three Middle Street, Gloucester. The applicant is Eric Sullivan. He is purchasing the property and he is here tonight. Um, Christopher Vance is the architect and he is also on the call tonight in case there are any questions. May I share my screen?
You sure may. Thank you.
Can everyone see that? Not quite yet. There you go. Oh, there we go. Okay. So this is the building that most people are probably familiar with. It's one oh eight Main Street. It is changing its use from a commercial residential space to a twelve-room hotel with the restaurant remaining on the first floor. The hotel has less than thirty units and therefore it is allowed as of right. There's no request before um, the city council for the hotel use. The requested relief is quite limited. We are, the, because of the change in use, there's a need for a special permit for the existing height, which is in excess of thirty-five feet. The existing height is above grade, above the average grade forty-one feet, ten inches. Uh, we are also seeking a special permit for the reduction in the lot area. The required lot area is twenty-five hundred square feet per two units. And we are requesting a reduction to four hundred and two square feet per two units. And with regard to open space, the requirement is twelve hundred and fifty square feet per two units. And we are requesting zero square feet per two units. And these requests are all for existing conditions. This is the site plan. The uh, property line is this dark line and the jagged lines refer to the building. So as you can see, the building covers one hundred percent of the lot. And there is currently no open space on the lot. There are no changes being made to the footprint of the existing building. And on December eighth, twenty twenty-two, the ZBA granted variance for the existing dimensional um, non-conformities under GZO three point two, um, including lot area. The property is now being used as a mixed commercial and residential space. The first floor has a restaurant and a short-term residential rental. The second floor is owner-occupied residential unit as well as a short-term rental unit. And the third floor has studio space and two open spaces. The applicant is seeking to add a twelve-unit hotel on the second and third floor with passports restaurant remaining on the first floor. This shows the basement level as well as the um, first floor level. The rooms, the current side entrance on Center Street is here. This will be blocked in. And the new entrance for the hotel will be the back of the building, which is now a residential um, short-term rental unit. There will be an elevator added to the um, building. The second and third floor is where the rooms will be. They range in size from a hundred and sixty-four square feet to three hundred and seven square feet. And each room has its own bathroom. And this is just the roof, which will not change. This is the left-hand side of the building. This is the entryway that will be blocked in. And it will be done with the same brick that's there now. This will be the new entrance for the hotel. It will be on Center Street, not Main Street. This is the right side of the building. There will be three new windows added at the top of the building for the third floor. And this is the rear of the building and the front of the building. There'll be a second egress for the upper floors created out of this entrance on the right. The applicant, um. Let's see. I would suggest to you that the special permit should be granted for social, economic and community needs. The building is currently underutilized. The second and third floors with a hotel will create a more useful space in keeping with the downtown area. They'll bring a surge to the local economy with guests frequenting the shops and restaurants and other businesses downtown. It'll provide additional tax revenue to the city, increase value in the bill, um, the building from rooms tax. It'll create a greater need for consumer goods and services in the downtown area with the building once again being fully utilized. We have thirteen letters from local downtown businesses and one from the current owner that have been submitted in support of the application. With regard to traffic flow and safety pursuant to GZO four point one point one D, no parking is required under the ordinance for this building. And in addition, it's located within four hundred feet from the municipal parking lot on Rogers Street and a little more than six hundred feet from the municipal lot near City Hall. There have been questions that have been raised about the parking and we've answered those questions. But I do wanna be clear that the city council cannot legally deny the requested special permits based on the lack of parking or the fact that this is going to be hotel. There's no request before the city council to waive parking or to approve the hotel use. The applicant doesn't need the city council's permission for that. You can only act on what is in front of you and what is in front of you is very limited. It's limited to existing conditions of height, lot area and open space. Use is allowed as of right and there's no parking required under the ordinance. When the parking section in the ordinance was put in, it was decided obviously that no parking would be required for this type of building. And that can't be changed by denying permits. It doesn't mean that. It doesn't matter if you don't agree with the ordinance or you think it's going to be a problem, that decision has already been made. And the applicant is allowed like anyone else to rely on that ordinance. If you deny it anyway, the applicant could appeal and it would be likely, in my opinion, that it would be overturned and it would be very expensive. The applicant could also just go away and build their hotel in another city. And if that happens, the city would lose a great amenity for downtown that has the support of many of the downtown businesses. Deny also deny a longtime property owner of the sale of her building and would probably make it more diff, excuse me, difficult for her to sell it to anyone else. In my opinion, it's sure cited to deny a new business from opening up in downtown if the city is worried about parking. That needs to have a more global discussion. It shouldn't be on a case by case bas basis and it shouldn't be done to not allow businesses to open in downtown, especially where there is no authority for this board to rule on parking because the ordinance says it's not required. With regard to utilities and other public service services, the utilities will be updated and they will be adequate to meet the needs of the hotel and the restaurant. Neighborhood character and social structure, the project is appropriate for this neighborhood. It's consistent with the neighborhood character and social structure of a downtown residential retail dining center. It's a small twelve room hotel, which will add to the vibrancy of the local economy with guests frequenting the shops, the restaurants and other downtown businesses. The qualities of the natural environment will also not be impacted. There is no impact as the footprint of the existing building will remain unchanged. The height and lot coverage are preexisting and will not change. And the building is not in an environmentally sensitive area. There will also be a positive potential fiscal impact. Improvement and conversion of this underutilized building will increase its value, will add tax income to the city and will create new sources of revenue for the downtown businesses. A special permit for height for a building in excess of thirty five feet should be granted because the existing height is consistent with the neighborhood character. The height's an existing condition, it's been in place for over a hundred years. It will not substantially be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. It will not create any new obstructions of use, any overshadowing of other properties and there's no impairment of utilities or other adverse impacts. The existing height of the building, as I said, is forty one feet, ten inches above the average existing grade. And it's compatible and consistent with structures in the surrounding neighborhood. And these are just some of the buildings that are in the neighborhood. And you can see that they are of a consistent height with the existing building. With regard to the special permits for reduction in lot area and open space per two guest units. Again, I suggest that should be granted because the existing conditions will not be changed. And they are in keeping with the character and structure of the density in this neighborhood. Most of the buildings in this section of downtown have a hundred percent lot coverage. And you can see this is illustrated with the assessors map, which shows this building and shows you that all of the other buildings are, you know, cheek to jowl and they cover the entire lots. There's no open space associated with this building now. And we expect that since this is a downtown venue that the people who come to the to the hotel will want to explore the amenities of downtown. And I would suggest that you also want to encourage the guests at the hotel to explore the city and its businesses and not spend their time in the hotel. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Ellison. So at this point, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the special council permit? So we continue the public hearing, let's see, I see first Meredith Fine. Um, Meredith, you would introduce yourself and you have up to three minutes and our city clerk will will time you, so welcome.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Meredith Fine of one oh eight East Main Street. I represent the seller Kate Sideman.
Meredith, excuse me, it's a little bit, you're a little bit garbled, like. I I can you take yourself off the speaker maybe so we can hear you clearly?
How about now?
Still garbled.
How about now?
Hmm, you can, why don't you try try a sentence, we'll see if we can we can hear what you're saying, go ahead, thank you.
No, thank you. Just briefly, I represent the seller Kate Sideman and just want to express our strong enthusiasm for this project. And also to note that the project was on the market for some time. And this was by far the best offer that we got, by far. And so I hope that the council will will support it tonight as the ZBA did, thank you.
Thank you, Meredith, let's see, we have Claudia Schweitzer and Joanne Chirico. Joanne, would you introduce yourself, you have three minutes and thank you, Madam Clerk, for doing the timing. Introduce yourself and your address.
Hi, I'm Joanne Chirico, can can you hear me?
We can very well, thank you.
Um, well, I have, I I live at ninety two Main Street and then I have a shop at one thirty Main Street. So I'm sort of on either side of this building. And just generally speaking, I think density downtown makes a lot of sense. In this specific case, I think it's great that someone's going to take a building that probably needs some repairs, et cetera, and to take care of it and turn it into something that as a merchant is a good thing for downtown. So I just wanted to, you know, put my two cents in and say, I think it's a good thing all around, I can't see a downside to it. And and one other thing is that I do, I do have to park downtown and excuse me, I appreciate that sometimes that's a challenge, but I don't think that that should ever come into play in something like this. That's it.
Thank you, Joanne, thank you for staying on so late. We have a hand raised from Claudia Schweitzer, welcome Claudia, your name and address. And you have up to three minutes to chat with us, thank you.
Claudia Schweitzer, twenty five High Street. I'm just gonna, I wrote a letter to the city councillors, I'm just gonna briefly read it. Writing in support of the proposed boutique hotel on Main Street. We've often had family visiting and have had difficulty finding lodging for them. Although the Bowport Hotel is a wonderful addition, it's expensive and often fully booked. This new boutique hotel is in keeping with the style of Main Street. The fact that the wonderful passport restaurant will be able to stay only makes it more special. It's one of the only places that's open for lunch, by the way. So please, I'm asking the city council to vote to approve this project, thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Now we have Adam Farber. Adam, welcome, your name and address and you have three minutes to chat with us, thank you.
Thank you so much, Adam Farber here, I'm the owner of Mark Adrian Shoes at one oh three Main Street, directly across the street. My father, Mark Adrian Farber, couldn't be with us for the length of the meeting. So I'm speaking on his behalf as well, he's the owner of our building. We are both strongly in favor of this this hotel. I apologize, at this hour, I'm not going to be as eloquent as I might have been a couple hours ago, but I'm doing my best here. It's really, it's a great thing for for retail, for restaurants, for the whole downtown. It, this type of boutique hotel really breathes a lively energy into a neighborhood. And from my experience in other similar sized cities, this type of hotel is the future of where short term rental can be. It's a lot better managed than Airbnbs. It's a lot easier to, you know, collect taxes from, et cetera. And I think it's a it's a much better solution than Airbnbs throughout the entire city, having twelve well managed rooms and under one roof is a is a real asset. We saw a significant bump in business from the Bowport Hotel. And I think a hotel like this stands to be just as beneficial, if not maybe even more with its with its location. I'm assuming and hoping that it'll be open year round. It'll be an affordable option for a lot of people. And I strongly encourage the city council to vote in favor. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam. Any else, anyone else like to speak in favor? Beverly Palmachi, Beverly, would you introduce yourself and your address and you have three minutes to chat with us, thank you.
Okay, Beverly Palmachi, eight Commonwealth Avenue. I'm intrigued by the idea of a hotel, but I I didn't understand at the very beginning what Ms. Eliason said regarding the parking. Parking is not required, why, because it is a hotel?
Okay, Beverly, we will address that in the questions, so. Councillors, take note of that question so we make sure that we answer that in the question, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak in either in favor or opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondences for you to review with the council?
Okay, there were two correspondences that were submitted. Not within the seventy two hours. And you saw both of them, that that one went to you and one reforwarded. But it one was in in support and one was in partial opposition of this.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So councillors, it's our opportunity to ask questions at this point. So who would like to begin? Councillor Grow. You are muted.
I do some of my best talking when I'm muted. So I just want to make a clarifying question. If this property were not being turned into a hotel, let's say that it was being turned into a a startup space for a small tech company of thirty or forty employees that was coming in to to go downtown. Would they be required to have forty parking spaces?
There, there are two exemptions that could apply to this building. One that applies to the hotel because it's a residential use is the exception that says that if you have a commercial use on the first floor and residential uses on the upper floors, you do not have to have parking, period. The other exemption is for buildings that are within four hundred feet of a municipal lot. This building qualifies for that with the lot on Rogers Street. And it is also within around six hundred feet of the lot near City Hall. So in your example, councillor, I would suggest that that use also may not need parking or require parking.
I know that that's not a a condition, but I just wanted to clarify that it's not just this use that's exempted from that requirement.
And that was the answer to Beverly's question, so that's helpful. Who else has a question? Councillor O'Neill.
It's not so much a question as an observation, so I'm not sure if this is the place to say it or if I should wait.
If you're going to deliberate, you should wait, if you're going to state your opinion, okay, thank you, councillor. Who else has a question? Okay, I have, I have, okay, Councillor Worthley.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison, thank you for your presentation. Did you include the application that I believe that the new hotel would be subject to hotel motel tax, is that right?
I believe it will, yes.
So that's an additional benefit to the city municipality. I don't know if that was included in your application, but I just want to make note of that, that we'll be seeing some income from that eventually. No further questions.
Thank you, any other questions? So I I do have a question. So can you just describe a little bit the exterior modifications a little bit more in depth? I know that the folks that went there for the site visit were able to see that, but maybe you could just explain that, Attorney Ellison, that would be helpful.
Would you like me to pull up the elevations again so we can talk about them that way or?
No, I think you can just talk through it, that would be helpful.
So on Center Street, there is currently an entrance, there are two entrances. One goes into what used to be a retail store and is now an Airbnb. That is going to become the lobby for the hotel and that will be how the guests will enter and reach the elevator. The other entrance is going to be blocked and bricked over. On the right hand side of the building, there will be three windows added to the third floor. And then in the front of the building, there won't be any real visible changes, but there will be interior, a second egress for the upper floors that will be created on the right hand side of that building. And there won't be any other changes to the building exterior wise. The fire escape is likely to be taken down because there will be a second egress, which of course would be a much safer route out of the building.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report, Councillor Grow.
Very good, thank you, Madam President. On a motion of Councillor Grow, seconded by Councillor O'Neill, planning and development voted two in favor, one opposed, O'Neill, to recommend that the city council grant to Eric Sullivan a special permit, special council permit, two thousand twenty three dash zero zero one for the property located at Main Street number one oh eight, assessors map number seven, lot fifty one in the central business district pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance sections and get rid of the numbers. One point ten point one A one and three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty five feet or a building height of forty one feet, ten inches. And section one point ten point one A two, section three point two six footnote A, dimensional requirements for hotels, motels and motorines and their accessory uses other than signs for a reduction in the required lot area and open space. This permit is made on the basis of plans and elevations dated January fourth, two thousand twenty two entitled floor plans and building elevations and proposed floor plans and elevations submitted to the city clerk on January fourth, two thousand twenty three, subject to new information and or debate that results from the public hearing, the special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and I so move. Second. Right, on the on the on the motion?
So Councillor Grow made the motion, it was seconded by Councillor Worthley. Would you like to do the narrative, Councillor Grow?
A little bit of narrative, not not a whole lot, we 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 obviously reviewed the original proposal. Once we decided we'd have a site visit, which we had on January thirty first, was attended by the entire P and D and also councillor Memhard. We were able to see the exterior of the site, the existing building as it is and and the expected changes that will be in place moving forward. And that's where we are today, the 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 application literally cites all the requirements of section one point eight point three of a special council permit. And as has been pointed out, is not subject to the requirement of additional parking for the unit. So my own, that's the narrative on my on my own personal position on this issue is that you don't see special council permits come down the pike that are, should be as slam dunk as this. They're they're literally not asking for anything. They're asking for existing conditions that are with the building as it is today. They're not asking to raise the height, the height is already there, they're not asking for more to deal with open space because the open space doesn't exist. Every one of us that I can remember during our campaigns talked about the need to promote economic development downtown. Now we have something here that is literally promoting economic developed development downtown. It's gonna, it's gonna impact Main Street. Main Street, it's gonna impact the businesses, it's gonna even have the restaurants, it's gonna impact the tourist economy. And it's all going to do it with twelve rooms. So you're talking about twenty-four people who can stay at this hotel at any given time and enjoy the benefits of being in downtown Gloucester. And all we have to do is allow them to, to pave over one, one entrance and put a couple of windows in the building and take care of the interior modifications. That is about it. As little we could possibly ask to get the most benefit out of this that I think that we can possibly get. As I mentioned, you could turn that building into any number of things. You wanna put a startup down there and put thirty employees? That would be great too, but that would be thirty cars, not twelve. And so anything that we do down there is gonna cause some impact. The question is, is that impact more beneficial than the, the negative, potential negative impact that we might have on things that frankly aren't in our control or our jurisdiction? And I would say that in this particular case, the benefit far outweighs any problems that might, might arise out of nominal pocket parking and, uh, parking issues, which again, aren't part of our purview. So I would encourage the council to unanimously support this and let business know that, that Main Street's open, that we want them there, and that economic development is truly actually something that we care about. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Memard, on the motion.
On the motion, I will be supporting this. Uh, I think that Counselor Grow's summary could not have been more eloquent or appropriate. I think it's worth observing and noting that as part of the application before us, there were letters, letters of recommendation and commendation from, I, I'm not sure how many twelve, fifteen plus local businesses and property owners on Main Street, fourteen. Uh, unanimously in support of people that, that I know and respect who have been in business a long time on Main Street. And all who view this as being a positive addition to the community. It's a beautiful building. It started as the Gloucester Times at one point and back in the, the presses were up on the third floor. It's, it has an historical context and I think this is its next life and it'll be a good addition.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. Um, I, I will be supporting this tonight. I, I wish Mr. Sullivan the best of luck. It's, he's gonna be investing a huge sum of money into the building, elevator, uh, changes, twelve units. Um, he's, he's gonna be working very hard to make it happen. Um, I know the building well. Um, as a child, uh, second floor was my dentist, so. That building um has been around a long time and, and again, uh, I wish Mr. Sullivan the best in his endeavors to um to make it happen on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Worthley.
Yes, uh, first, thank you for this presentation. Um, I'll be supporting this. Um, I agree with everybody and specifically Counsel Grow. This is very little for us to do to really spur some economic development downtown. Um, Ms. Ellison, thank you for uh doing a great job once again on a presentation. Uh, the fact that you get fourteen business owners to agree on the same thing is, is no small feat, so um credit to you there too. Uh, I wish the owners well and hopefully it's a very robust hotel. And by the way, Counsel Grow may not even be twelve spaces because they could come by boat, they could come by train, they could come by Uber. Um, it could be even less than that, so I'm looking forward to this, uh, this permit passing and hopefully it's uh with robust support. Thank you.
Counsel Grow, thank you, Counsel Worthley.
Yeah, um, I, I, I really applaud this. I think this is a, uh, a very, a key piece to the revitalization of downtown, which we um all hope for so much. Uh. It, uh, it's really, as uh Counsel O'Hara said, there's a major investments going into this building. And uh, and I really applaud your efforts and, and um welcoming this change that really as Ja, as Counselor Grow said, they're asking nothing from us except for to allow what exists, exist in a different form, so. Um, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else like to speak on the motion? Um, Counsel O'Neill.
Yes, I am uh stuck between a rock and a hard place here. I have residents that don't want congestion and I have businesses that want business. Um. Attorney Ellison, you have done a wonderful job um convincing me. Um. And I realize, I realize parking is not an issue. I mean, it's not on the table. I was on Main Street Saturday afternoon and there was um a bunch of fire engines on Main Street. Evidently there was some kind of electrical event. And I watched a fire engine go up Center Street and it took up the whole street. I actually took a photograph if you guys wanna see it. So that would be my only concern is the unloading of luggage on Center Street. I foresee that as a big problem, but um, that's my only objection and I can't see how that can stop me from voting for this. I think the um, the benefits outweigh the, the negatives, so. Kudos. Good job.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else that hasn't spoken on this? Um. Um, I'm just gonna wrap it up by making sure that I again cover a couple of the highlights of one point eight point three. Doesn't apply to the height, but it certainly applies for the other part of um our permitting. Um, so in terms of the social, economic and community needs uh served by the project, the applicant intends just to convert the second and third floors of the building at one oh eight Main Street um to approximately twelve rooms, a small lobby. It's also noted that there will be an elevator, so that's awesome for people that might be um handicap accessible. Um, it makes it handicap accessible. Um. It, um, the footprint will not change and replace the underutilized second and third floors with a hotel use will create a more useful space and keeping with the downtown area. Um, and it's highly supported by um the, the abutting businesses. In terms of our utilities and other public services, the utilities will be updated as necessary. The neighbor, neighborhood character and social structure is appropriate. And um to um a comment that I believe Counsel Worthley made, the potential fiscal impact. Um, it's, it's, it adds tax income to the city as well as hotel tax, which is um, which is an extra part of that equation and um and the whole building, the exterior will remain unchanged. So anyway, so those are the things that I felt compelled to uh discuss and um I will be um supporting this as well. So is there anyone else that wants to participate in the discussion? Seeing none, um, I'm it's time for a roll call vote. So let me get my roll call list. Okay, um Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota absent. Counsel Memard.
Yes, and best of luck.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, and good luck.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent.
Excellent.
Thank you, um Deb Ellison. Uh, Counsel O'Neill, you have your hand raised?
Do we need to vote to continue the meeting past eleven?
Yes.
So um. Yes, thank you. Good call. Um, so let's just say goodbye to um, to everyone that wants to leave. So thank you all for being on the call and um it's been a long night and we appreciate your hard work. Um, so, so let's um, let's, so counselors, let's um, let's move to continue the meeting after eleven o'clock per our rules of procedure. Counsel O'Neill, um, that motion in, I think it was seconded by Counsel Worthley, correct? Yes, okay. Um, thank you. You're welcome. And um, and so we have a motion, a second on the extension of the meeting. Uh, Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota's absent. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent to continue the meeting after eleven o'clock. Um, next order of business, Madam Clark.
The next order of business is for council vote. City Council, uh, ordered number twenty twenty-two dash zero three seven Worthley to amend Gloucester zoning, Gloucester zoning ordinance, section five point two two, commercial land based wind energy conversion of facilities, section five point two two fourteen, monitoring and maintenance.
Counsel Worthley, I um ask you to um make the um, the motion if you would.
Well, so moved.
Um, so a Counsel Worthley has moved the motion and it was seconded by Counsel O'Neill. Um, so in that is without question, excuse me?
I'd be happy to speak on it if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead. Um, that would be great.
So I had submitted, um, I intended to submit a something to regulate the monitoring of wind turbines and it turns out it should be in the code of ordinances, not the code, the zoning code. And Suzanne Egan and Joanne Sinos and I, we all were working on it. I, I'll take responsibility for sending to planning and development. Um, there is a new one coming specifically on ordinance administration because it's regulating something that's already in use, much like we do for pilings, so that should be coming forward. This is just, it doesn't need to be in the zoning code. So that's why we're withdrawing it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so on the motion to withdraw without prejudice. Um, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Majota's absent. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Most of those requests to the mayor.
So let's go by roll call vote. So Counsel O'Neill.
As it is such a late hour, I will email my requests to the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, just a couple of things. I thought it was very touching that we did a tribute uh for Bob Wyatt earlier this uh meeting. Um, but there are two other people since our last meeting that I know of that had great ties to the ci- city as a municipality that passed away, that would be Ed Parks, the former DPW director. And Tony Talidorish, who wasn't a resident of the city, but obviously a major contributor to the community. Um, and I think that there will be, it might make sense at future meetings to do some sort of um moment of silence for them as well. But I just wanted to draw attention to the contributions they both had made to our community. Um, I would, I had anticipated that, and I think maybe Counsel Gilman, you may have suggested this, that there was going to be an update on the MBTA conversations with the grade crossing when, when Mayor Verga spoke, but we didn't hear that part. And I could have been mistaken. Could we ask for a presentation from either you or he um at a s- a meeting coming up pretty soon?
So I think the, the beginning would be to um, to make sure that um, the the notes of that last meeting, which were very specific to the conversations that we had on the last five, four or five incidents that occurred um is very clear. We should um make sure that that is in the next packet. And um I know the councils have received it. We want the public to see that as well. And there was also the letter um to um Steve Aiello, which was a response on the questions that he submitted back in September. And um we have that as well. So we'll make sure that that is in the packet. And um I can check with uh Mayor Verga if he wants to summarize that as well. I mean, I certainly am able to do that, but I think that, in my opinion, it's better coming from the mayor. Um, and um, or Senator Tar, but, but basically I think the answers are all in those documents. And you know, let's keep telling people to um, you know, when there are incidents, we know what they need to do, so. Um, but, but I'll, um, I, I will check with um, with Mayor Verga on that, so thank you.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Gross.
I'm good.
Counsel Grow.
I'm good too.
Counsel Memard.
Uh, three quick items. Um, first, I apologize. It had been our plan uh to have Kenny help summarize the presentation that was made in budget and finance on Thursday afternoon. Uh, which was a meeting of the whole, while Counsel Gilman was able to attend. Um. Uh, it's, it's important, the uh, our, our legal obligations under OPEB, in addition to the city pension liability, are just some big financial chunks that we all need to chew on. And so I would request respectfully that um our, our summary presentation of that be continued until our next meeting in two weeks when, as part of the budget and finance committee report. We can ask Kenny Costa to uh help uh address that and many other members of the budget and finance committee would like to contribute to the conversation. That would be welcome. Um. Uh, people in Ward one are still looking for answers to the Good Harbor Beach Creek situation. Uh, the Cape Ann Surfers Union met last week specifically with, with their concerns on this ongoing subject. And I'm, they've asked me to meet with them um later this week again. Uh, and I, you know, I can't say much from the point of view of the city. I've read the report and I don't know what it means. I don't know where we stand, so uh, uh, we're looking to the mayor and the Board of Health, um, and the DPW and whomever else is helping us with this to uh uh clear, clear the path forward. Uh, thirdly, and for all of you, um I have secured the East Gloucester School Auditorium for a Ward one community meeting on Thursday, March second. Uh, for many, that may be the last chance you'll have to sit in your old wooden chair at the East Gloucester School Auditorium, since it's gonna be demolished uh several months hence. Uh, but that's at six o'clock and I look forward to input from those of you who have had ward meetings and make sure I can pick up uh on your agendas and tips for making that as constructive uh community input session as possible. Thank you.
Counsel Memard, if I could just double check or something, you said the first of March, Thursday, the first of March?
Thursday, March second, I believe.
March second, okay.
Thursday, March second, six o'clock, six to eight at the East Gloucester School Auditorium. Be there or be square.
Thank you.
Um, Counsel O'Neill, you have a um, a meeting on Friday night? Um, this Friday, is that correct?
Yes, Friday, six o'clock at the Gloucester Fraternity Club.
Awesome. And Counsel Nolan, are you in the process of booking a date?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And then I know um Counsel Majota's as well. I'm also gonna have another session for four, for Ward four one. Um, so um, and I, I can send you the video of just the section when I did the budget at um recommendation session. Um, my, my video is in nine segments and I have no clue how to get it on Facebook. I, my husband has tried to upload things out of the server and um it's too, too big to put on and, and we've got some work to do, so um, but that's, but I, I will do the best I can to at least that first section to all of you. Um, if you wanna see it before you do your meeting. Um, so anyway, so um, let's see, where did we leave off? I think that was, that was Counsel Memard, right? Um, Counsel Nolan, you're next.
I have nothing except to wish everybody a happy late Valentine's Day. And thank you for all being in here.
Counsel O'Hara.
I am all set. Thank you very much.
Um, and I have nothing to say except thank you and uh thank you, Joanne, for your patience. Um, it's been a long night, so happy Valentine's Day. Everybody, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Everybody moved. Okay, that's good. So let's do a quick roll call. Um, Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yep.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, and good night.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, and good night.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.